The meeting is called to order. We're going to start with an invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Campbell. Pastor Mulberry, please.
Good evening, everyone. Father, we thank you once again for another day. We thank you for your goodness towards us. We thank you for how you blessed us to come together once again at this time of session. We pray God for the wisdom, for the courage, and for the insight in what to do in this meeting. We pray God your hand will rest upon us that you were blessed. As our mayor, city manager blessed. Involved. Thank God, amen.
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 Please join me as we salute our nation's flag.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Krantz.
Of course. Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Here.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Will Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Rufus Forum.
Present.
Mayor Robbie Correa.
Present, thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have a corpsman in the chambers.
Thank you. On to approval of minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to read the minutes and review them? Okay.
We make a motion to approve all minutes as they have been presented.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. On to public recognitions, presentations, employee of the month, Ms. Jones.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, thank you all for this opportunity once again for us to recognize an employee that has performed outstanding during any given month. And our nomination and winner for our employee of the month in the spotlight is Officer Brian Bowers.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor, City Manager. Chief Shaw is on vacation, so y'all are stuck with me tonight. So Officer Bowers was nominated by the Police Department for Officer, I'm sorry, Employee of the Month for several reasons. One, he is one of our hardest working officers that we have at the Police Department. A lot of times you have to call people and say, hey, can you come in and work with Brian? It's totally different. You have to say, hey, it's time to go home. So Brian is just very, very hardworking. He does a great job with all of his investigations. He turns everything in in a timely manner. I mean, you just can't ask for a better guy. He trains. He's only been with us for right out of a year, and we already have him as an active field training officer. He just does an outstanding job, and that's why we put him in for this award. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, the legal department would like to recognize this certificate of internship for our legal intern, Joe Andradeo. Joe is entering his third year at the University of Florida Law School, and he was very excited to work with us this past summer on the Blight to Bright team. And he's worked closely with Mr. Cutright, helping us all out with foreclosure complaints and working with the team to improve the city of Palaca. And he's done an excellent job, and it's been an honor working with him. And in fact, he has agreed to stay on for an additional month to fulfill his pro bono requirement, so he will be working with us for the next month as well. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
In the administrative reports.
All of that for nothing. River Center land swap notifications. Do we want to keep this in the administrative reports or place it under regular business?
Madam Mayor, I believe we still need the minutes.
Okay. No, we did that already. We did that.
We missed that. In terms of the legal department, River Center land swap notification deadlines, we respectfully request that the commission make a motion to move this down to regular business.
Make a motion that we move this down to regular business.
And also under administrative reports, I have been in touch per one of the commissioners' requests with Ms. Erdley, and she has also requested under regular business a consideration by the city commission for direction on investigation.
Thank you. So.
I will make the recommend, I'll make the motion that we move the land swap down to regular administration as well as that we have discussion with regards to the investigation and.
Investigation or son.
Sons.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Any other senior junior administrative reports?
No, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
With that said, I'm going to open the floor up to public comments. Please keep your comments to three minutes and provide your name and address for the record. We do have a couple of cards. Sam Deputy.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Sam Deputy, 917 Carr Street, 623 St. John's Avenue. I'm here about a matter that has been going on for years, and that is the road construction on St. John's Avenue. We're in our sixth year of that. Our merchants have suffered for six years, and we just keep hoping that it'll be done because when we get this done, we're going to have a glorious downtown. And when the sidewalks are done next year, it will be a place to show. But the process has been difficult at best. And the merchants downtown, it's not, we're not thriving like we should be and as we have in the past. I want to reiterate, we've been downtown with our businesses and our family fifty-seven and a half years. So we have that experience of what is thriving. But we had worked with the city to, on the goal of this being done by the end of July, and it might still be done. But the paving was to begin this past Sunday. And we discovered upon city notification that on July 3rd that it was being delayed two weeks. July 3rd, Fourth of July weekend, you know, you're going to come back and the pavement's going to be in motion. Well, we just got the notice. That can't go out. Did you get the notice that it was delayed? So we wanted to know why it was delayed. So we asked for a public inquest of information. Ms. West was very, very helpful with that and very quick in getting that to us. But there was no notification from this company to this city in writing that we were, that they were delaying. Was it a phone call? A multimillion dollar contract changed on a phone call? I don't think that that is proper business, or at least in my world, it is not. But there was no contact according to city records from May 28th to July 1st with this company from this city confirming that this project was going to happen as we told the rest of the merchants in a flyer so that they could plan. Some were taking vacation, one scheduled surgery. All falling apart because of a delay that we do not know why. We were told in the paper and the notice that it was a conflict of scheduling. After six years, we need a conflict of scheduling for the last month? I'm not sure, but we don't truly have answers. We are concerned. We were saying, we were told, well, what's two more weeks? Two more weeks can be make or break for some of these small entrepreneur businesses. We need to have a city that supports the businesses, that provide the jobs, that pay the taxes. That's what we need. And currently, we do not feel that this city has our back. Thank you.
Thank you. Tasha Givens. Ms. Givens.
Good evening to everyone, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, our administrative. My name is Tasha Givens. I live at 225 Stillwell Avenue here in Palaca. I would like for the commission to consider what I just recently learned about, and I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but it's called a PFOS. April of this year, April 26, 2024, there's some recent regulation or legislation that's coming out. Let me just read this to you. PFOS, including PFOS and PFOA are a class of man-made chemicals which are very persistent in the environment and are very difficult to remediate. With the recent establish of MCF. With the recent establish of MCLs for PFAS-related compounds by the EPA and additional regulatory guidance expected soon from the FDEP, PFAS risks are anticipated to quickly become a significant concern at Brownsville redevelopment sites, which of course, the property behind City Hall, I believe is considered a brownsville. With the latest redevelopment challenges related to PFAS from both a technical and legal standpoint, as the federal and state FDEP requirements continue to take shape, I'm asking that our commission, our city, consider this when you're considering the land swap. Is it really in the best interest of the city of Palaca and the citizens that live here and who currently have the opportunity to utilize the St. John's River Center, which from what I understand was actually built for the community here versus it becoming privately owned? But there's also some more legislation that's actually coming out concerning PFAS. And I recently attended the Florida Brownsville Association Conference, and there was a lot of information and there's a lot of changes that's coming out. So I'm asking that you do your due diligence and that you check every I, dot every I, and cross every T before you move forward with this land swap. And respond, and in addition to that, I'm asking that our city consider the recent developments that have come out. And that, my question is, are you doing everything that you can to protect us as citizens to make sure that everything is fair, that is transparent? And of course, I know you like to see facts. And from what I understand, you have received information and facts. So thank you for your time and everyone have a good evening.
Before you leave, could you tell, can you spell what you're talking about, please?
PFAS, P-F-A-S. And P-F-O-S. They're two different, two different things.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, what's two different things? What's two different things?
One is called P-F-A-S. The other one is called P-F-O-A. And there's one more, hold on. P-F-A-S, P-F-O-S, P-F-O-A. And there's some recent legislation that just came out April 26, 2024, and May 8th of 2024 that you would need to consider. You don't want to be stuck with something that you won't be able to remediate. Thank you.
Any commission and staff response to these concerns or questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Currently, the regulation with respect to PFAS, which is also more colloquially known as the forever chemicals, you may have heard of this. That regulation has been challenged in federal court. We are watching that closely. Also, Palaca is a plaintiff in a class action lawsuit related to PFAS. And I would like to also just acknowledge the very hard work that has been undertaken by Chief Taylor in ensuring that his employees are being protected from these forever chemicals. They are found widespread in firefighting the foam that is used to fight fires and also for their attire. And he has worked tirelessly over the last several years to make sure that his employees are safe from these carcinogens found in forever chemicals. But we are highly cognizant of this issue and track it very closely and are actually are involved in litigation pertaining to it.
Thank you. Excuse me, your public comment has ended. I'm sorry. On to the consent agenda. Is there any items to be pulled? I've been asked to pull D. Okay.
Concerned anyway.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
When you say pull D, remove it from the.
It's being pulled for the time being. Mr. Cutright can speak more to that. But he, the applicant has requested be pulled and brought back at a future date.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, not pulled for discussion, but removed from the agenda.
Pull A for discussion. Yes. Give me a second. You want my glasses? Okay, for discussion.
I'll make them, I'll make it.
So A, D is pulled, period. A and K are pulled for discussion.
No, 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 no. A, G, and K are pulled for discussion. D is pulled for configuration. So I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as printed excluding items A, G, and K for discussion and omitting D overall.
Okay.
You have a motion? Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. A. Ms. Grant?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Concerning item A, the commission annually appoints someone from this commission to serve as the delegate, the voting delegate at the Florida League of Cities. This is requested by the Florida League of Cities. It is my understanding Commissioner Borum is willing to serve as the delegate if appointed by the board. Manager Troy Bell is also willing to serve as an alternative delegate if the desire of the commission.
I'm already, I'm already part of that process. So, so you're going to have, I mean, the delegates should be, there should be separate delegates. I'm part of another board that's already
Oh.
A part of that.
I don't think, sorry, I don't recall us talking about that, but okay. When I asked you, I thought you were willing to serve. My apologies.
Okay, but we can, we can clarify, let's clarify and.
To avoid any confusions, I would be willing to serve as the voting delegate.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion on this? Go ahead.
I think we have a different discussion. I, I don't want any confusion.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept, I can sit, get them out of A.
But we can't accept the motion. We would have to create a new motion being that this was a recommendation for commission.
So will we deny it first and then, okay?
It's already.
I don't think, I don't, we don't, we just have to make.
Mr. Campbell attend as the voting delegate.
Second on that.
We have a motion to second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you.
For the record, there's no alternative?
No.
Thank you.
Can I ask, do we normally have an alternate?
We normally have an alternate, but it's normally a commissioner.
Right.
Gotcha.
We'll board conflict.
Conflict. Gotcha.
Um, D, not D, excuse me. G, Ms. Grant?
Item G. Adopt resolution 2024. R 136. A resolution of the city of Palaca authorizing the Palaca Police Department to expend funds in amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand to upgrade and replace current firearms and handguns providing for scrubbers' heirs.
I clarify this. I pulled it, I said D, but you okay, G, and I didn't want to stop it. So I don't have any questions about trading another weapons.
I pulled you.
Oh, you did, G?
D.
I know. And that's what I was going to pull too. He said G. Someone else did?
No, G?
Want to clarify, I did.
For the record, D has been requested to be removed off the table all the way.
Right.
She would be the one with the Palaca Police Department.
And I have any, I don't have any questions in reference to the weapon swap or change of purchase.
Okay.
However, I do.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Just, if you can kind of just, not just what's going on and.
He don't have his last job. Bear with him.
So, so the reason that we've added it to the commission agenda item, as a commission agenda item, is because it exceeds our twenty-five thousand dollars per our procurement policy. We're at thirty-three thousand, and that's why we brought it forward.
Thank you.
Oh, and I want citizens to spend up to thirty-three thousand dollars.
Yes, ma'am. And then the purpose is twofold. One, we're getting close to an area with our current firearms where we're going to need to start replacing springs, firing pins, things of that nature. And the other is, right now, the value of our current firearms is relatively high for trade-in value. And we were going to look at doing this item for the upcoming fiscal year, but waiting another year, we would lose a decent amount of money in the trade. So we felt it best to do it this year. The money was in the budget, so we're going to do the trade with the approval of the commission this year along with the purchase.
Okay.
You okay?
Any additional questions? This is in Chief's new form.
Sorry for the confusion.
That's, that's okay.
That's okay.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in multiple seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. On to K.
Item K, a resolution of the city of Palac, Florida incorporating the proposed benefits policy to section eight personal security program of the personnel policy and providing for scrubbers' heirs.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones, do you have a question on that?
All right, do you? You'll expound the government, please.
Asked to expound on it to provide more information.
Okay. Go ahead.
So as we brought this to you guys in October of last year, and then we would put a hold on, moving forward on any more policies, it was brought back on our June 13th meeting with all of the corrections from October that the commission had desired to see put into the policy as pertains to pension, language, and any other supplemental policies that we own, that we offer, we offer to our employees. All of that information was placed in there, which is what we brought back on June 13th. And so now we're asking for this policy to be adopted so we can update it into our personnel policy.
Any additional questions?
Refresh.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Where's Ms. McCaskill? Yes, I was. One second, we'll finish it up.
I'll take this. Alright.
We have a motion to approve K in a second, and Ms. Jones gave additional information as to why, refresh the memory, as to why it was on, the resolution was here again, which was that we had discussed this in October and again in June. And it's been amended. So we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
Thank you.
On to regular business, A. Yes.
If I may, before we go on to regular business, I would like to make it known publicly that I will be recusing myself from item B and C for discussion and direction as I serve on the board for Palaca Pal and I serve on the board for the Lee Conley House. So I would omit any comments as well as a vote to ensure that there is complete transparency.
Thank you. And fill out the form as required.
I will have it.
Okay. A, Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Madam.
Sorry, Ms. McCaskill, go ahead.
I just, I just, I'm not sure if, when we recuse ourselves, is it required that we remove ourselves from the room?
It's, it's a good practice. I don't know if it's a requirement. Ms. West, can you answer that?
It does help with the appearance of proprietary to remove yourself from the room, but it is, there's no mandate that you.
Okay, if there's no mandate.
But we're on A, so Mr. Bell?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So we're at the point to renew our contract with the Department of Corrections for the services that they provide. And our city attorney has developed an addendum that I think will address some of the concerns that we have about working with labor, prison labor. So I'm going to ask her to give you a brief description of that because I think it is really a groundbreaking approach to the way that we can address these issues.
Ms. West?
Sure. Basically, the Florida is one of the few states that pays hardly anything to our Department of Corrections work squads, which many have characterized as essentially slave labor. This particular addendum to this particular contract would essentially provide a benefit to no cost to the city and really no cost to the state of Florida Department of Corrections by providing for criteria for those inmates that do work for the city of Palaca for a set number of hours. Upon their release from prison, all of their civil restitution liens will be completely forgiven. As you may recall, we had a constitutional amendment recently that allowed formerly convicted felons to vote, but the state legislature has made that more difficult by requiring them to pay for their civil restitution liens before they can vote, except there's no way to determine how much those liens are. There is no central database with the state of Florida to determine how much they have to pay. And so they still end up not being able to vote. This would remedy that solution for those inmates that work on the grounds of the city of Palaca. I am not aware of any other jurisdiction in the state of Florida that has attempted this. I'm not sure that the Department of Corrections will be amenable to this addendum, but we figured it was worth a shot. So this isn't a resolution approving. It's kicking it back to the Department of Corrections with your approval, including this addendum.
I think it's a great.
Opportunity for us to lead the charge. So thank you so much for taking this into consideration and bringing it before us.
I think it's wonderful. Thank you. Do we have, okay, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve item A.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. West, for doing this.
Ready to move to the next item?
Okay, B. Discussion Direction Resolution 2024 R 133, authorizing a donation to Lee Conley House to assist with operational expenses due to recent decreases in state funding and authorizing an FYI 2023-24 budget transfer to accommodate same. The request is, the request is for the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-nine cents. Mr. Bell?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would ask the, because this was an item that was requested by the vendor to be placed on the agenda, I believe they are present today and ready to provide a presentation supporting their request.
Thank you. Ms. Slavin, if you could give your name for us.
Good evening.
Yes, please.
Commissioners, I'm glad to see that you each got a copy of this so I don't have to go over it in so much detail. But to give a little bit of. Oh, I'm sorry. To give a little bit of background, we are approximately fifty percent voca funded for our budget year. And in the past two years, we've lost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funding. Last year or this year that just wrapped up, we were able to, we were able to pull together some additional funding. We had some reserves put aside, and we were able to muster through the year. Unfortunately, this year, we. Um, unfortunately, this year, we took an additional cut, and, uh, these are due to federal cuts. Nothing to do with any of the services. These are federal across the board. And, um, uh, though I did reach out and I did apply for every opportunity I could, I raised an additional ninety-thousand dollars to supplement the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand that we lost. However, um, that, that's simply not enough to keep the services at the level that, that our citizens, our survivors deserve. So I'm asking, I've, I've been, uh, a part of Lee Conley House since two thousand and four. As far as I know, we have never come to the city for, uh, funding. Um, however, uh, this year, we're just, I, I, I think that the, the survivors in our community deserve to have twenty-four-hour shelter coverage, and, um, I, I hope you will partner with us to make sure that that happens.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions of Ms. Slaven? Commissioner Borman?
Well, I mean, so it's a hundred-and-twelve-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy, thirty-nine, that's, that's what.
Correct. So, um, what we did is we lost five positions. Um, just, just from the get-go, it takes five advocates to run the shelter, and that's with no one getting a break. Um, and that does not include our outreach staff. We lost five positions. Uh, again, I was able to write some grants and, and pull in some additional funding. But this one-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars would cover two positions, and then help with putting some food on the table also.
Commissioner, can you tell me about the two, you said it was a quarter of a million at first, and then you got ninety thousand of that? And then you're asking for one-hundred-and-twelve-thousand?
Correct. I, I didn't want to overextend, I wanted to make sure that I'm only asking for what I need.
Yes.
And what I need is to cover two positions, and then, um, some of the expenses of basic needs inside shelter, which includes food, electricity, things like that. A very small amount going to that. But the most important thing is, we are a twenty-four-seven center. Um, therefore, it is a requirement that we have at least one staff member there at all times.
Yeah.
And, um, that takes five staff members.
What is your total budget?
Um, just over a million.
And then, uh, one other question, um, so this is what you want from, uh, the city, but if, have you approached the county at all?
Yes, the county supports us every year. Uh, it's not a lot, but they have, uh, again, I've been here since two thousand and four, and they give us, um, we are, uh, always in their ongoing budget.
Like, um, what?
Ten thousand dollars. Yeah, it's, it's not a lot, but, um it is consistent.
That's ten years, I mean, almost eleven, eleven years. Well, this is an eleven-year request.
And I might be able to be helpful with this. Uh, um, I had an opportunity to, uh, meet and discuss this, um, uh, weeks ago. Uh, this request and the loss of the funding. Um, I asked staff if we had a policy in place to uh, address this, and we don't currently have a policy in place for those requests over twenty-five thousand. Um, I think it might be helpful, uh, if, and I'm not sure of the urgency of this matter, it might be helpful for us to develop a policy with a rubric to help you assess this, because I'm sure you're going to receive several requests along this line in the future. Um, so staff is already poised to begin developing that policy with a rubric. And we can, uh, bring this back to you at the next, uh, next meeting, if that's at the pleasure of the commission.
I, I think that's a good idea. I mean, we, we value what Lee Conley House does, and we now also have a request for power coming up. All of these services are highly needed in this community, but as a city, we need to have a policy. Um, we're not a wealthy city, and we need to kind of figure out how to do this fairly for everybody, but yet be a part of the community and a good partner. So I think a policy would be very helpful.
Absolutely. Well, we did, we, we do have a policy in place as it relates to, um
Procurement in general.
Oh, you, you're calling it procurement?
Yes.
Okay, we were, we were, we were doing like donations, and we had something written up through Don Home when he was in place, so.
Okay, and I do know that there is, uh, a line item for contributions to special events that each of the commissioners has.
Okay. All right, but that's, this is a.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I don't think so. Maybe, oh, any other questions? Excuse me, she's called, but that wasn't what it was. Thank you. Um, C? Discussion Direction Resolution twenty-two-four R one-three-eight, authorizing a donation to the Palack Police Athletic League, PAL to assist with the Palack Teen Summit and Youth Directors Conference, and authorizing an FY twenty-two-three-twenty-four budget transfer to accommodate same. The request is an amount of sixteen thousand dollars, and we did request you returning. Give us information, so, thank you.
Yes.
Hello, Commissioner, my name is Lilita Thomas, two-four-zero-six, Lee Terrace, Palack, Florida, I'm three-two-one-seven-seven. So, um, thank you all so much for this opportunity to just present to you. Uh, Palacka PAL, um, as most of you know, um, is the oldest and largest, um crime prevention program, um, in the United States. We are a member um, with our state PAL and our national PAL to try to help, um, this crime prevention with our youth. Um, so what we do each year and every summer, we offer the kids the opportunity as they work through the mentoring program, uh, participate in all of our other programs, afford them opportunity to attend youth conferences during the summer. Um, there's two conferences, um, one is, um, a teen summit, um, typically is held in Washington DC, um, but this year was held in North Carolina. Um, and then another youth conference that's held down, um, youth development con- conference, ran by the youth themselves that's held at Disney. Um, so, I went way over my presentation, um, but you all have the presentation, so um, what the ask is, is for us to be able to, um, offer this opportunity to them. Um, so my request is really a reimbursement, because the funds already had to be expended um, for these youth con- conferences, so, um, it's just a reimbursement of some of the funds that we've had to, um, put out um, for the conference. So I'm gonna leave it there. If y'all have any questions, ideas, send the presentation to you all, and the presentation shares some of the highlights and the pictures um, from the conference that is held.
If you have any questions, Ms. Thomas?
Let me miss Bill does.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bell.
Commission had, uh, directed, uh, staff to identify possible sources of funding uh, when this was discussed before, and we did identify, since this request is less than twenty-five thousand uh, item, uh, in the American Rescue Plan funding, that would be appropriate for that. And under the educational, uh, category, you do have the availability of funds to utilize from that category. If you deem this to be appropriate.
And what were the funds available in that again?
Forty thousand.
The balance is forty.
Forty thousand.
The, the amount available as of this moment is forty thousand.
Okay, and while we're on that, um, we still had that one budget line item for this is separate, but I want to see how we can shift it back in, at least try to entertain that. Um, for the funding, for the, um, the youth, not euthanizing, uh, pets, but
Spaying neuter?
Spading neuter, um, we still had that funding line for the animal control. So, I would say, use that funding, animal control, you put that funding back in, into that, and we can probably shift you, make, make better use of those funds from the ARPA funds. And be a little bit more flexible with those. They just wanna put that on the table.
So, would require a motion by the commission to, uh, allocate those funds, uh, if you deem it appropriate from the educational?
Motion to, oh, oh.
To fund this request.
This power, the power request, we're on the power request.
We're gonna, we're gonna take fund from
ARPA.
From American.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we move on from the ARPA, um, funds to, um, facilitate um, the police athletic links on request for.
My second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Hold on, and the amount of what?
The, not to exceed. Well, say it was sixteen and change, one.
It's sixteen thousand right here.
Sixteen thousand.
Okay. Sixteen thousand.
All right, Commissioner, can I also make sure I understand that, that ten thousand that's, um that was previously there for the animal, we put that back where it was, or?
That was what you.
That was the director from Commissioner Borman.
Right.
Yes.
We didn't vote on that, that was a suggestion.
Uh, just a suggestion, thank you.
That was for the, uh, animal.
Neutering, yeah.
Okay.
Suggestion, but it wasn't a motion.
So, our motion to put the ten thousand back into animal control.
Okay, thank you.
Our motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate the support, and just want to let you all know there will be a, um, community back-to-school event on August the third. Um, a lot of our, um, business partners are partnering with us, um, to host that event. Last year, we gave out seven hundred backpacks. Um, this year, we're looking, we've had nine-hundred-and-sixty backpacks donated, so we're continuing to work, um, to get the supplies needed. So, any organization is, um, offered the ability to participate, um, with us and provide information to our community. There will be a food giveaway as well as a clothing giveaway at the same time, so thank you.
August twenty-third, located.
August third. It will be August third, um, at fourteen-fourteen Bronson Street at the Calvary Family Life Center.
At what time?
From eleven to two. You up?
Thank you, Ms. Lilita.
Thank you. Let Ms. Commissioner Campbell get back up here. And next, we'll discuss the land swap. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to ask the, uh, city attorney, based on the memo that she provided, to, um, present on this item.
Commissioners, there was a issue raised, um, pursuant to commu- uh, the disposal of properties in a community redevelopment, um, agency under Florida statute one-sixty-three-point-three-eight-zero-three A. There are two different provisions under that statute, subsection one and subsection three. There's only one case law on point, the, the City of Tampa, uh, somewhat took the position that I had in my interpretation. However, they were overruled, um, by the Second DCA in twenty-twenty. And so, in an abundance of caution, since that overruling, uh, basically takes precedence over the Attorney General opinions that we were relying upon, um, in an abundance of caution, I am, are recommending that we go ahead and provide notice, uh, for proposals for the acquisition and the revitalization of the St. John's River Center in order to avoid what I perceive to be a potential threat of litigation. Um, and so that would be advertised, uh, for a thirty-day period, and that is my recommendation moving forward. And I do believe we have, uh, Mr. Douglas here, uh, who I have confirmed with um, regarding the, the city's position on this particular statute.
Douglas, yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, fellow commissioners, Mr. Manager, and Madam Attorney. I just want to say, uh, thank you for the workshop earlier in the week, and it's great to be back with you again. And the, the first thing I'd like to address is, just going, what Madam Attorney was mentioning earlier. And that is the statute that was circulated at the workshop. Uh, we believe that the statute is distinguishable from the matter before us. But with that said, we don't want the city to be in a limbo. Um, we want this to continue to be a win-win for the city, and we are not going to object to opening the thirty-day notice. So, uh, that timeline will allow us to continue and, uh, the planning that's underway, and will be in line with the other calendaring events that we had discussed in the past. So, with that said, I'd like to also address Commissioner Jones's concern about the topic of access. And that's something that's very important to this project overall, and it really is the, the heart of this project, is access. And from the very beginning, our unwavering commitment has been and continues to be that the River Center will be open to the public. Accessible and engaging to the citizens of our community and to our guests. Uh, this is not, and it never has been, a, a thought of an exclusive club. Uh, we, we do not want a wall built around the one-hundred block. Uh, we, we want to tear down walls uh, literally and figuratively to let more people, yeah, we want more traffic, we want more tourists, uh, locals, we want people to come and stay and linger. Uh, under no circumstance do we want, um, exclusivity or any type of barrier to be built around the one-hundred block or the River Center, and, and no way has that ever been, uh, a thought. And right now, the River Center is open with its current operating hours, and our commitment is to make this building more accessible than what it is currently. And that, that's something that is, uh, very important to us, that we will continue in, uh, the, the planning and the feedback and the input that we have received from commissioners, and how we can make this project the best it can be. In addition, there was a question about events, and I just want to reaffirm the weddings, uh, socials. Other gatherings at the River Center will still be an integral component of the River Center. Again, we want more people, not, not fewer people downtown. I'd like to turn now to the question of the Port Consolidated Building that was raised at the workshop, and what it means to the city. The value to the city of the Port Consolidated Building exterior is multifold. First, the property itself is where the eye goes for visitors coming into our city. And what better of a warm welcome than a city hall that rises up at this critical welcome corridor? The city would be able to have complete control of what our community's gateway looks like moving forward. Think for a moment if that property lands in the wrong hands. Are there other revenue-generating options for Port Consolidated? It doesn't take too long for the mind to imagine a different private party who sweeps in and sets up shop at Port Consolidated with an unsavory use, or an absolutely inconsistent use with what any of you or any of us in this room would want to see as you reach the crest of the Palack Memorial Bridge. The good news is that opportunities like this only come once in a lifetime, and the building will, will support a state-of-the-art board meeting room that considers technology, functionality, and safety. The bones are good, and there is ample square footage, and it just received a brand-new one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar roof. And we do have, uh, in, in forty-eight hours, you can only do so much, but we, we try our best, uh, to be able to show something some potential renderings here of what the existing Port Consolidated Building can look like. Again, the structure itself would remain identical, all of the walls. Uh, there would be, um, potential for an exterior facade upgrade. And then in the interior of the building, using the existing walls, existing rooms, be able to have some greatly improved, uh, board meeting space.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. We did, we did want to focus on the issue on the agenda. We appreciate that they're beautiful, but we want to, um
Yes, I'm.
Yeah.
I, I'll, I'll keep moving forward, yep.
Thank you.
And then also from a, a numbers perspective on the perpetual evaluation analysis. I would ask for you to remember that there's an important topic of staffing that is included in that financial analysis that Ms. Rhonda Odom prepared as an independent CPA professional. And she is an expert that has considered all of the factors, and importantly, the staffing implications, and calculated the very real overhead factors of that staffing. And then finally, the the benefits of assemblage is something we talked about as well at the workshop, and that not only applies to the one hundred block, but also assemblage applies for the city as well. And perhaps even more so on this side of the street. Bringing together the Port Consolidated property, current City Hall, and the City Hall Annex allows you to have the space and an L-shaped footprint that could be sold for a major development project if you choose to go that route. And then the final question that was brought up in the workshop was the matter of a right of first refusal, and if that is the will of the commission, certainly agreeable to that as well. So in closing, I just want to say thank you for your leadership and your commitment to Palatka as well as that of your incredible city staff. And they have been instrumental as well in ensuring that we move our community forward, and we are proud of the legacies, all of us can be proud of the legacies that we will leave behind. And we ask for your continued leadership tonight to promote progress, thank you.
Mr. Douglas, based on Ms. West's recommendation.
I think we need to move forth with the notice for proposal for the recommended of the thirty days, just to ensure that we are in compliance with that, so that in the future, whatever the decision is ultimately that it is one that is solid and it does not come back to haunt us in the years and days to come, so that would be the first request that we move forth for that proposal.
Second.
Was that, that was a motion? Okay, we have motion is second, all in favor? Aye, any opposition? Thank you. On to, we need emergency motion to add things to regular business.
I make a motion that we add to, as an emergency item, the investigations as a result of a recommendation from our labor attorney, Ms. Susan Elderly.
Okay.
We have.
Do we have to specify?
Hold on.
One in time, yes, Miss Commissioner Jones.
Yeah, I think we may be forgetting, so if we.
For us to move forward, we gotta have that motion.
Yes, motion is second, we have a second, okay, then discussion, go ahead, Commissioner Jones.
So, they may be forgetting an important step, so if we are gonna err on the side of caution here, thirty days, that's gonna put us at the after the third of August, which there's a deadline.
No, the the contract's going to go into a ban, so we're starting over.
So it's done over, okay, I just want to make it clear, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're on the emergency motion to add these items to the agenda. Do I have, we have a motion is second, all in favor?
Oh.
I think he was referring to.
He was referring to the previous.
Okay, but.
This is just to add the emergency motion, there will be discussion.
Okay.
Okay, we have all favor. Any opposition? Thank you. Okay. With that said, let's have a discussion about the first investigation, whichever one was considering, there are two investigations we have to discuss.
Before we get, sorry, can I make a?
You can, go ahead.
Um, one of the investigation, I think, as it relates to the one for our our CM, I'm not sure if that should be an investigation at this point, because generally, when there's an issue of that sort, generally, HR would handle, it would be, everything would be presented to HR, HR would do their portion of the work and provide information to the commission as it relates to, here's what we, what was discussed and founded and investigated, and we're gonna be moving forward with the investigation through this agency. To my knowledge, that hasn't. So I'm not sure if that would be the proper thing, in in my opinion. So I, I spoke with Ms. Ms. Virginia Jones on that one particular issue as it related to our CM, so that's I think we might be moving faster than we need to be on that after I gave it some thought.
Commissioner McCaskill, do you have any thoughts?
Again, can you clarify that again, what did you just? And I want to apologize to everyone, I have had some dental work done, so it may be very difficult to understand me, but I'll do the best that I can to be as, you know, clear as possible when speaking, but can you, can you kind of share?
Yes, yes, I will.
Concerns, please.
No, yes, I will. My understanding, it was, it was allegations brought before with you, correct?
Absolutely.
And it didn't come from the HR person who would have to put in a grievance, from my understanding, a grievance would have to be written in order for it can be even heard by, for for any attorney to be able to address that, labor attorney to be able to address that, so something have to happen from internal in order for it to be able to, before it can go external, I mean, Madam, Madam Attorney, is that not right, or help me?
I, I, I do agree that typically HR would conduct an investigation, however, given the the structure, I don't, I don't know what decisions have been made at the top to deviate from that process. I think the city manager can probably speak better than these issues.
I don't know.
I.
I'll wait till my turn.
I would think this, the HR department and director reports to the city manager, how can they do an investigation when they're a subordinate of that person, that would be.
Okay, no, 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 I don't hear.
Difficult.
Here's my question, my question was the fact that things are happening internal, okay, there would be statements that are allegations, or not allegation, but the 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 a grievance would have specific instances in there with dates, time, whatever happened, happened, and at least it would be presented to the commission's body, the body, so that we know and understand what's happening, that hasn't happened.
So question, please, and it's just to, I'm on a kind of, as we're digging, to dig deep. I don't think there is any proper or policy that entails if there is a alleged grievance against the city manager, what is the process? Generally, if there is a grievance against a city manager or, and let's speak of just an organization in general, they don't have to go to HR, they can go to a member of the Board of Directors. In this instance, we don't have the Board of Directors, we have a city commission, so if a complaint was taken to one of the commissioners, the commissioner has the ability to bring it before the commission, because again, there is no specified policy which allows it to or deem it appropriate to have to go to HR simply because HR responds to that city manager. So again, in order to avoid any discrepancies or potential flaws, if a person brings it to, again, again, this is in the instance of a city manager that if they bring it to a member of the commission, that we have a duty to bring it to the forefront of our commissioners, and then we have the ability to investigate or do what we have to do, does that sound almost?
Yeah, I'm I'm a little confused if you're talking about the assistant city manager or the city manager, in the case.
City manager in this case.
Which I don't even feel comfortable with you even addressing, so.
I don't, that's why I've asked Ms. Erdely to weigh in.
That's why I don't, I don't even feel comfortable with her.
The same with HR, and and both instances, I don't feel comfortable with them being put on the spot to to address this, that's why the labor attorney we have on contract is contacted for direction.
I I certainly understand that, but my, 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 my issue with that was that generally the body would know what is going on, and again, that's why then the last meeting, myself and another commission on the board did not know what was being put before us that we were, we were voting on, and that's why in the past, it's always been, all right, here's some things that's happening as it relates to any grievance or whatever issue that may be going on with the city. And we understand and know what's going before us before we just hear it in this, in this format. That's all I'm saying.
And I.
Commissioner McCaskill.
But, go ahead.
Go ahead.
If you want to say something first.
Just quickly, the question came up as to whether or not there was a policy or in place, and I want to make sure that we address that, and if there is a policy or not, everyone, all these are all valid points, and it doesn't have anything to do with me except to say whether there's policy in place or not.
I can tell you that there is no policy, because I was the one who brought it up one time before in the conversation as we were talking about policies and procedures, because I went through the same thing with another organization that did not have a policy for the executive director who was receiving a grievance, hence we had to create one. And as a result of that conversation, I brought it over to the city of Palatka, because I did not want us to fall victim to that same thing, and here we are.
Okay, with all of that said, what is the decision of the commission to move and moving forward in some fashion?
Would you like for me to speak now?
Yes, please.
Okay, those were very valid points that you brought up, but we have to be mindful of the individuals that made the that brought the concerns to me, and remember, remember the individuals directly report to the city manager. So it was necessary for them to come to one of us. I have spoken in length with Susan Erdely, and I asked her what the next steps are, and one of the things that she informed is that we have, we, she does have a potential investigator that is free and independent of the leave, the leave or her, the Mark's Grace Department as well. Also, it will be dependent, the one that she has recommended would be dependent upon that individual's availability. The one thing we need to do as a commission is identify, we need to identify the scope of of the investigation. From there, that will inform the investigator's decision on whether or not the investigation will be conducted by that individual in particular. That person would consider the timeline based on the scope. The investigator would need someone to report to. We don't, and that that would be something that we need to decide, I call the investigation, if you all would like for her to report to me or report to the mayor. The scope, and what I, what I just, what I, what was brought to my concern, the issues that were brought before me, the scope is whether we have a difficult, whether a difficult work environment has been created as a result of the city manager's practices and what could be done about it. Our commission is already taking action by calling for an investigation, so we are good on that part. It is recommended that when we call, when we make a decision on what we're going to do, that it is important that we recommend that the investigation is completed before his probationary period is up, so that if there, if the investigation's conclusions and recommendations include corrections or whatever, and guidance and support, he'll have the opportunity for time, and we are crunched for time, because his probationary period is up in August. And also, it also gives time for the commission to review and respond to the results by the end of the investigation, so that we don't have, we're not crunched for time. I am waiting, she has reached out to several, now, just because she has recommended someone that she just knows, not, not like really good friends of. This person is out of Tallahassee, the one that she is recommending is an African-American female, she did not give a name. However, she, I, I am, I am waiting to hear back from that person. So that's a starting point right there, and we can go from there and kind of have more discussion.
Thank you, Mr. McCaskill, Mr. McCaskill, anybody else have any comments or thoughts? We did make the decision, as Commissioner McCaskill said, to move forward with this investigation. I think now we're tasked with determining the scope, which I think we would want to keep as basic as possible, which is to investigate whether or not there has been the creation of a difficult work environment by the city manager. I don't know if anybody has anything additionally to add to that.
I mean, that recommendation came from?
That came from Susan Erdely. And add into that, I mean, based on what I shared with her about the concerns, what will it, what would it be that we would need to add, if these, this is the guidance that she gave us to follow, follow? What more, if you all are not aware of the concerns that were brought to me, and I shared with her, what more would we want to add?
May I?
Absolutely.
I kind of follow both of you guys' positions. However, a complaint should have been launched with HR, because they're first person with any employee relation issues. And with that, I, I do understand the uncomfortable position that they may be in, because it's against their supervisors. But I think in the absence of an initial complaint, it doesn't launch an investigation, excuse me, because what you want, I, I, I'm just on erring on side of caution for yourself, Commissioner, I don't want it to look as if you're launching the investigation, so those people, and I know you're not, because you you have been transparent, but I feel those people should have come forth with some type of statement to HR to begin this investigation. So I just wanted to kind of like, so, so it's on, you are in line, but I I understand what Commissioner Born is saying, that it it has to begin somewhere, and if it's not something in writing, it could be misconstrued, misconstrued that one of us is launching that complaint, that's all I want to say.
Commissioner McCaskill.
What I would like to say, and not identifying HR as one of the persons that made the complaint, but we have to be mindful of who the individuals that made the complaint, and remember that the person that they made the complaint about is the person that they have to report to. So we got to be mindful of that, and I get exactly what you're saying.
Apologize, because I didn't know those details, okay?
Yes, sir, good, yes, sir. And we, and and in protection of the employees themselves. Now, I would like to bring up something in full transparency. In the process of the investigation, whatever direction we decide to go in, regardless of who we decide to choose, the investigator will come in. We do have Mr. Bell, who is present. We would like the employees who made the complaints or shared the concerns to be, to be able to be candid with the investigator. We do not know how he or she will conduct the investigation and coming in into the organization, speaking with those individuals, and trying to protect their identity. So also, it was brought up in A or B. If we should consider placing the, placing the city manager on administrative leave, no, nothing different than what I said about the purpose of the investigation. The investigation is twofold, in order to provide. The investigation is twofold. In order to provide our city manager with guidance because he has not had clear guidance in the process in his role and to make sure that we address the concerns of the city, of, of, of employees. Now, that's not some, a route that we have to take. Also, the investigator may feel that she can go, he or she can go about it in a different sense so that these employees are protected and that they are not easily identified of, about the, who made the complaints. So I did, do need to put that out for full transparency. Not recommending either or, but let enough my fellow commissioners know. Also, keep in mind, we do have two investigations going because we did talk about that. And we do want to make sure that whatever we do, that we are fair and impartial to both individuals that are under investigation.
And she actually brought up a point that I was going to make with one of the recommendations that came before. That the administrative leave and the, in the absence thereof, there is an individual that normally steps up. But that individual is one of the, uh,
On the position.
On, uh, we're in the position of an investigation as well. So again, that opens up a door again for much needed conversation, but we'll be definitely put in a position if the two of our tops are not in a position. Because if we put one on, we have to put both on.
Absolutely. That, that was brought to my attention. So just for, for disclosure that I was asked to bring up. However, it's our decision. Now, I also want to talk about, um, and I don't know if I'm able to, the investigation that Mr. Bell is over. Um, a recommendation, um, rather, rather than putting that individual on leave, possibly, um, placing that person in another position.
Before, just with respect.
Okay, sure.
Can we close out one?
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
So that we won't get to overlap and I want.
Great. Thank you for that respectfully.
So if, if we have to move forth with the recommendation, I would make the recommendation that we stay along the lines of what has been provided. Uh, the guidance that has been provided with regards to conversations that may have taken place uh, with our labor attorney, which again, each one of us as commissioners have the ability to reach out to her at any given moment um, to seek guidance and clarification of sorts. So I would make the recommendation that we move forth and we identify who that point of contact would be, um, from our commission. As a liaison between the commission and the investigator.
Okay. All right. You have a motion? Is that a motion?
Well.
But we still have to.
Identify. Okay. I can tell you that because I, um, one of the things that she recommended because I initiated the investigation or recommended it to my fellow commissioners that I can be the point of contact or you, but it's up to the commission.
I did, and complete transparency, and if I'm wrong, I believe that this, I would not recommend the mayor because of the position of bringing Mr. Bell on and a vote that was cast. I would not want this to be.
I agree. Thank you.
I want us to give an opportunity to be as fair. So I would not make the recommendation that the mayor serves as that liaison.
I think it's fair to all part, both parties. So that's fine. I agree with that.
If that's the case, again, since Commissioner McCaskill has been the one that um, has been at the forefront of it, I will make the recommendation as a part of, uh, the motion to have her serve as the liaison um, between the commission and the labor attorney as well as the investigator moving forward.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Well, you need a vote one way or the other. Opposed?
Can we roll call it?
Roll calls, please, Ms. Krantz.
I'll just say nay. I'm, I'm going to say nay in the, in the, as I, I think that should be clear. There's, if she launched it, I don't think that she should continue to be a part of it because of your intimate knowledge with um, the, the subject matter as well as other dealing with, with, with the staff involved as well. So I think if, if, if we could bring HR into the.
You missed the point. She's a part of it.
She is a part of it. She's going to continue. She's the point person to the labor. She's the point person to, however, the investigator turns out to be.
All right. Well. Well, maybe that, that killed my.
Ms. Kitchens, we have a couple of public comments.
And that's good to ask these questions. Because here's the thing, we have to be mindful with involving any staff department heads in this, in this because, because we're not sure who the complaints came from and protecting the identity of the staff.
I can stay with that motion that was made.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry about that.
No, I like you asking.
We need, still need to do a roll call. Do you want me to?
Um, I, I, I can. Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Yay.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Yay.
Commissioner Will Jones.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear. Did you hear? Um, okay. Um, go ahead.
May I say something first? Along the lines of the mayor's, uh, vote for Mr. Bell, Ms. Eartherly also did not recommend that we hire her. So that could be a conflict with her recommendation. Just want to put it out there. And that's important to know her, 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 her recommendation at this time may or may not be in Mr. Bell's best interest. But I want to be fair to the employees that are bringing these allegations, um, to them. So with that, I just want to make sure that she really isn't hands on, on this investigation if this wants to continue.
Well, then, Mr. McCaskill speak to that.
Good question. And again, I, I emphasized earlier that she said this is only a person that she recommended, but this is not who we have to go with. We definitely can, um, decide to go with someone else.
So with that.
Commissioner Campbell.
And I want to make sure that I don't think that she was not in favor of Mr. Bell. She was not in favor of the contract and some of the jargon that was a part of the contract, not her favor, Mr. Bell. Um, actually, she came back with recommendations to help side with both sides that were brought out of concern. So I don't want to say it was her against Mr. Bell. It was her against the presented contract.
And not to continue, to continue it on, she did remind me that on the night when she was on Zoom, that that was her very first time hearing about it. She did ask for an extended time to review the contract. Not that she was not in favor of hiring him, but wanted to be able to thoroughly review the contract. So that just substantiates what you said.
Thank you.
So to keep things moving, yes.
Okay, so. Sunny, I roll call his.
Oh, he said Commissioner Jones as a yes? Thank you. Commissioner Rufus Borum?
Yes.
Mayor Robbie Correa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed unanimously.
Ms. Kitchens?
Allegra Kitchens, ten twenty seven South Twelfth Street, Palaca, Florida. I think that my initial question has been resolved. It looked like Commissioner Borum was wanting to rescind your vote and there would have to be a motion to reconsider and then the motion be approved. And then you take a, a vote if you want to rescind that previous vote. But after you all got to talking, the rest of you, and that, that cleared that up. And Commissioner McCaskill, you were spot on everything you said. And Ms. Eartherly said, she asked, simply asked the city commission to wait two weeks and do more vetting before they hired him. She was not against it. But, uh, if it, if, you know, so the mayor voted no and Mr. Borum voted no, if I remember correctly. So you're saying that if they vote no, then they might be prejudiced against him. That's true. But what if you voted yes? You might be prejudiced, prejudiced for him. So if you voted yes, you're for him. If you voted no, you're against him. So how can you vote yes and then not be prejudiced any more than you can vote no and be prejudiced? It sounds like you need an impartial person, not me, but an impartial person. I mean, sorry, I'm, you know, because I've got opinions, but I mean, it sounds to me like you, you need a third, another impartial person who has no opinion either way to be the liaison instead of one of you. Y'all, some voted yes, some voted no. It just, so how can you be fair if you voted yes? How can you be fair if you voted no, if you want to look at it that way?
That was worked it out. I think we worked it out without you.
No, I don't want it. You know, I, I might volunteer, but I don't want anything to do with it. But I was just, I just thought that was a tangent, but I liked the way Ms. McCaskill explained everything perfectly. And that you all voted on this to hire the investigator. The only other comment I would make is that you've hired the investigator and that's fine. And now you're talking about the second investigator to check, to check on the employee. I think that it would be, you would be well served to have the one investigator investigate both of them. Because when you have another investigator to check on the employee and then you have the, the, the city managers being investigated, being head of the investigation of his employee who's being investigated. So I think the one investigator should be the one that investigates both the employees and it not be separate. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Givens?
I want to make a statement towards what she stated. I want it to be known and I want it to be fair to Mr. Bell. Mr. Bell has made it clear that he wanted to bring in an outside investigator to work the case with regards to the employee. So I don't want it to appear that he would be leading the charge. You don't have to reapproach. It's fine. But I just wanted to make sure that we brought that to the forefront and that's not, it's, it's taken care of.
Okay. You're, you're one hundred percent correct, Commissioner, and thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. But it was said that they wanted Mr. Bell to be in charge of that private investigation.
Commissioner McCaskill.
Also, that was one of the concerns that I spoke with Susan Eartherly about. And we want to make sure that the investigators that investigate have the institutional knowledge to investigate each case. So we want to be fair and impartial to both that are under investigation. And it may not, and we may not be able to get the same one. Okay? Also, if I may add, I don't know if this is the proper time. I just would like to, um, to address when we have, um, you know, when we have individuals that come up to the podium, them and their behaviors at the podium. We have certain standards that we have to uphold and how we have to address our citizens, our constituents. And I think it's important that when you govern these meetings, that not saying that you don't, that you keep that in mind and get to know the behaviors of, of your fellow commissioners, because we do have an individual who comes up and takes charge in this meeting room. And I would like for you to, um, please help us in the act, asset to try to govern the meetings accordingly. Because sometimes when we speak up, we definitely are addressed and be, and, and made, um, reminded of how we need to address them. And I think it's important because that one individual is in the process of running. And, um, I would like for that individual, I did talk with that person about how we are dressed as elected officials to make sure that if they were to be up here on this dais to kind of practice doing a better job at addressing us as elected officials so that if they do get this position, that they are practiced that so that they can talk to our constituents.
Ms. Givens?
Good evening again, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Tasha Givens. I live at two twenty five Stilwell Avenue here in Palaca and I'm exhausted. I just want to remind the city commission that you have a responsibility to the citizens of Palaca, and that's every citizen, not some. All to be fair and to be just. And I'm glad that Mr. Larry Kitchens brought up prejudice. Because when we look at this situation, and if you read the newspaper, you will see if you have two individuals that are going under investigation, you mainly only hear about one. And I'd like to, I would like for our city commission to consider that. Me personally, if you want my opinion, it seems like a witch hunt. Mr. Bell wasn't welcome here in the beginning, even the night that he was sworn in. I don't even know to this day if he's had a picture with the city commission. And if you guys have actually come down and welcomed him, you snap pictures, I think at every meeting just about, you know, recognizing employees and things of that nature. But speaking of hostile work environment, that might be something you may want to consider. When we don't welcome all our employees and then we make this work environment difficult and challenging. So all that need to be considered. We need to be fair and we need to do things in decent and in order. There's policy and procedures. I personally, I'm born here and raised here and I've been here long enough to know how things work here in Palaca. I recommend that you get someone to investigate that has absolutely no ties to Palaca. I don't even know about the Susan lady. I don't, I don't know her, but if she knows somebody in Tallahassee, that's just three hours away. So for the sake of transparency and the integrity of Palaca, you have factual information pertaining to your assistant city manager. Am I correct? That's okay. That's okay. I'm not. But what I'm saying is you're spending time here wasting our time making a decision when you should be focusing on what you really got the information on. So as I said before, this is a plant, in my opinion, I feel like this is a plant distraction. And it really doesn't look good in the city when you see this constantly on the channel, twelve news, Channel four news. And it's, it's biased. It's, it's not giving the full picture. So that's what I have to say. I hope moving forward that we can be honest and transparent. And for the sake of the integrity of the city, that we fully disclose all facts and information. Let's be fair. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, go. Go ahead, Ms. Commissioner McCaskill.
Again, I value and appreciate you when you come up, Mrs. Givens. Um, this is the second time you brought up that you feel that the, um, when the city assistant city manager was brought on board, that none of us came down and shook his hand and made him feel welcome. And I would like at some point, whenever the mayor seems it's appropriate for you to, for the, uh, city manager to respond to that, because I feel that I can speak only for me, that I have tried to make him feel very at home. Even after the meeting where he was brought on board, we had an extensive conversation here in this meeting room. So if he doesn't mind, I would like to him to, to attest to that to give you a sense of security that I, I, I did try to make him feel welcome. Also, um, about, um, it was about the, uh, being fair and impartial or whatever about this of having someone else on this. I am the one that was aware and brought to, this information was brought to me. And again, I stated the purpose of my investigation was number one, to be fair to both parties, to make sure that he has guidance. So it was nothing, it was equally balanced. I wanted to make sure that I was protected, that we were protected as a legislative body when these, and when these employees entrusted in me to come forward to me with this information. And I'm aware of it and savvy. And to have someone else to come in and discuss something that they have no clue about would make sense to me. Also, the investigation is independent of anything of the city.
Thank you. Did you have something, Commissioner Campbell?
I do, and I'll be remiss if I didn't state it. A lot of times, and it's not just Ms. Givens who stated that when people come to these meetings, that we waste their time. What people have to realize is these is, this is the only opportunity that we have to talk, to talk amongst ourselves to try to make sure as we try to progress and as we try to move forward, that we move forth as a unified front. We don't, I can't pick up the phone call. I can't pick up the phone when I leave here, call Commissioner Borum, call Commissioner, call mayor because we're governed by the sunshine. So I've, I've, it, it feels as if it's a waste of your time. We apologize, but we have a job to do. And a part of our job may not always be comfortable. It may not always fall in the thirty hour minute meeting. It, sometimes it requires us to dig. And so be mindful again as we come and we throw. uh, additives and things of, um, what we, what we do and things of how we operate, just because it doesn't fall in the way that you deem to be appropriate. We have a job to do and our job is not an easy job. Our job is not a quick job. Just like you want us to hear all citizens, we've heard all citizens. And we want to make sure that as we talk about these investigations, that we don't simultaneously talk about them as one instance, because they're not one instant. What happens with the recommendation that came as the investigation of Commissioner McCaskill, as well as the one that I'm going to make sure that we talk about, because that was a recommendation as well, that we give it the, we give it the time that we need. We can't control the narrative of the newspaper or any media that comes to Putnam County or Palaca. We all know they have a job to do. We all know that they have news to sell. So we can't control that narrative. What we can control is making sure as we move forward, that we move forward and we take in consideration whatever it is on that with that first investigation and the second investigation, that we leave no stones unturned. And whatever we do, we want to make sure that it's across the board. I operate in complete, y'all hear me say transparency more than my baby called my name. But at the end of the day, I've done absolutely everything to operate in complete transparency from the time. And as far as the whole, we haven't welcomed Mr. Bell, Mr. Bell, that's not even, that's, 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 that's just a perception of yours. That's, that's just not factual. But again, when it comes down to us doing the business as commissioners, as legislators of this community, we have to make sure that we vet it out. And again, if you feel as if we're wasting your time, that is not it, because again, tonight is my mother-in-law's birthday. My family is out with her celebrating and I'm here in the meeting. So if anybody's time is wasted, it would be mine. So I want to make sure that again, I signed up for this and I'm here doing what I have to do. And at any point, any person that sits under the sound of my voice or on the outside, want to sit down and have a conversation about what I do, how I do it, why I do it, I promise you, I'll avail myself and we can get this thing rolling. But as so far as wasting time, we ain't wasting time. We are doing our work.
And with that said, let's move on to the other item. Are we all set on this one?
So we do have to make sure that we agree upon a time when the, um, when the investigator reaches out, and this will be the last one, um, about, um, it is also, it gives us time, like a time, if we want to say a certain amount of time before his probationary period is up. You know, so many weeks, a date, so that we can also have time for that investigation to be conducted. And then the results are brought for us. So we don't, we can't say, well, we just got this before us tonight, the fourth meeting. That it gives us time to review the conclusions and recommendations.
Okay. So the probation, probationary period ends on August 7th. We're now on July 11th. So what does anybody suggest that we request the investigation be completed? And we have the findings by what day, Commissioner Borm?
Uh, my, my opinion, if, if it's an investigation, you gotta let the investigator determine that time. I don't want to rush anything. I know we got a, a probationary period coming up. But at the same time, you need to have the investigator to do their job without us, um, um, giving them a, an abbreviated time. So again, you can, like you say, they can, they can be extended as it relates to the probationary period.
Commissioner McCaskill?
That was one of the things that I brought to her attention, and that is going to determine whether or not investigator will be willing on to take on the investigation because of his probationary period, us wanting to have the investigation conducted. And if that investigation, if, if that investigation investigator feels he or she has the time for that. So we have to say, hey, we would like, like it conducted within two weeks and give us a week to review. That way, that investigator, you know, doesn't want to take it on without being able to do it in a fashion that he or she feels is good enough and will provide a thorough enough time to conduct. So I need to be able to give, you know, some type of direction to that investigator.
And in fairness to, to Mr. Bell, as well as everybody else, it needs to be done as soon as it's possible. Um, again, the person's going to be paid to do it by a certain timeframe if they're willing to take it on. So I don't know what people, what are some of the others' thoughts? Do we have any potential dates? And if they need an extension, I'm sure they will ask for it.
Absolutely. That was brought up. They will ask for an extension.
Again, we want to bring this to closure for everybody involved, because it's troublesome for the city.
I think that as we proceed to try to move forward, I think it would be friendly just to make contact with the investigator, just to see what a given timeframe would be. Again, I think we limit ourselves if we say we want it in this timeframe and it's not thorough. So I would say, how long would it take possibly for an investigation of this magnitude to, um, to be done? I think that's the first question. And if it's something that we deem to be within an appropriate timeframe, we move forward. But in the event that we don't, we just have to take something else into consideration.
Okay. So my next question would be, our next meeting is what, August 20, uh, when is it? July?
25th.
Okay. July 25th. So would you all like for me to ask? When I speak with the investigator, um, how would you all, when I inform him or her of this information, how would you all like for me to get this information back to you all to see if we need to call an emergency meeting to determine whether or not we're going to go move forward? Just give me some direction. Um, I hope y'all understand where I'm going with this.
I understand, because you can't communicate directly with us.
Sunny Krantz is our, uh, city clerk. I mean, she handles all our communications.
Okay. So I can let you all know, I can let, uh, Sunny know, and then she can disperse that information out. And we can go from there, whether or not we need to call an emergency meeting to determine whether or not, yeah, and they, from there. Am I right?
Yes. Commissioner Jones?
Since we've already determined that we're going to go ahead with the investigation and you're the liaison person, why don't you just? Why can't we authorize you to go ahead and, and get, have the investigation commence? Because all back and forth is just going to delay it. And I think if, if, if we give you that, that authorization, you go ahead, the investigator know what he or she has to do. And that's getting the witnesses, getting the victim, talk to everybody and just compile a report. It's not going, it's not that difficult. So identify the investigator or the firm or whatever, whoever we're going to use. And you just have a move for, would you want to start? And, and then you can give us updates, yes, uh, Sunny, but please go ahead and start it, because it's just going to prolong things.
Yeah.
We need to move forward. Thank you. Are we, um, done with that topic? Onto the next.
I don't think we, well, we still need to talk about the, um, the other investigation.
That's what I'm saying, onto the next investigation. Um, and that has already, Mr. Bell?
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I want to, um, be clear that, uh, what I have called for and begun is an inquiry. I don't like to use the terminology investigation. Uh, I wanted to be fair and objective and transparent and in the interest of collegial integrity for the assistant city manager. I want to make sure that we are, um, pursuing an inquiry. The scope that I have defined, I can share that with you, was included in the correspondence. And I think the original, uh, concern about the other item was to develop the scope, which you did. But I believe that the scope, uh, for this has already been developed. And if there aren't any objections, that scope is to first determine if there is an ethical or criminal requirement to provide notice per code ordinance or ICMA code of conduct based on act or appearance. The second item that I asked the investigator to, uh, pursue in the inquiry is if there is a requirement to provide notice, what form or format must it take? And did any such situations occur in fact, or appearance, if applicable, that would warrant the need for disclosure? And if sufficient or adequate notice was in fact given? That is the scope that I have provided to, uh, uh, for the inquiry. So.
Commissioner McCaskill?
So is it safe to say that you are asking for an independent investigator to come in, but you want to name it an inquiry?
I am asking for an independent inquiry concerning the allegations that were brought to my attention.
Versus an investigation?
Yeah, I believe that, that, uh, the terminology is important and it may lead to an investigation. But at this point, it is an inquiry. Because I want to make sure that I am fair, equitable and transparent.
Okay, go ahead.
So I want to have a question and I, and I, I may need to wait until the end to ask, ask this question.
Do you want to wait?
Because it's related to the other investigation. You know, if we're changing the terminology, I mean, we're both using investigators, but now we're changing the terminology, the verbiage. So I'll wait until then.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, ma'am. I have a question. But if I'm sitting up here and knowing what the job dues and responsibility of the city manager, investigating, uh, looking into inquiry is part of your job.
Yes, sir.
And the scope that you just described, you should be able to do that yourself. And at this point, unless you find something more egregious, egregious, I think that you need to carry that out. And I don't know if the board would agree with it, but that's part of his job and his duty versus to pay for an independent investigator to find that scope that he just explained that he is looking for or we are looking for. Please correct me if I'm wrong about the job.
I believe you, I believe that is, that is correct. That is, um, the city manager's role to do that if because of the level of the, um, staff.
Well, I, I mean, y'all know, I just come different from what y'all thinking. And if we're taking them back into consideration of, uh, and I hate to jump back to that. But if we're taking into consideration a person that while this may be in his scope, you have to realize that the person who is the being investigated wanted the position that the city manager has. And so I want us, I don't want him, the city manager, to be put in a position, um, just like we didn't want anyone else to be put in a position. I want us to be fair and concise. And I believe that if we say that it is his job and the city manager determined that he would request that an independent, um, and inquiry, um, was to be looked into, that we afford him the ability to do his job, that we do have to be mindful that with this, this doesn't necessarily fall upon our scope. Our hire is the city manager. The city manager is responsible for the assistant city manager. So if he feels that in his documentation or going through, he feels that it needs to be brought to the attention of bringing somebody else in, we have to stand behind him and do what it is that, let him do what it is that he feel like he needs to do. So again, now we are jumping into the day-to-day operations and I don't want that to happen. So again, if we're going back and forth to make sure that we allow him to, in his capacity as city manager, to call in for an independent, uh, to look into this, we as commissions or legislators have to stand behind him and not dictate what he feels. Because again, we're compromising our role.
Our, our role is to lead and direct.
Our lead and direct. But again, when we come down to the day-to-day operations, that's something that we entrusted him to do.
Again, so I'm entrusted him and I believe that he could be impartial and do an inquiry. So the inquiry will, you know what that means?
No, I got what you're saying.
Break back facts. So we don't have any facts in front of us right now.
Fact was provided.
Courtesy to you. So we are saying, go ahead and call in a special investigator. And I just need to ask a question. For what? So if it hadn't been brought to our attention exactly what we're looking for or what the accusations are, that's something simple that I feel that our city manager could do is do fact finding.
The information.
So that's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm interpreting as the fact finding has occurred. And there is, uh, again, the city manager has made the decision and I believe has found somebody to do the investigation.
Yes. So there are some findings, is what you're saying right now. There are some findings.
But he shared with us, there's not, it's just, it's just information. It's not findings. I wouldn't call it findings this. I'm calling, what, what we'll share with.
Okay. So let's, let's, let's do this. The information that I provided to Mr. Bell, because information was provided to me anonymously by a concerned citizens of Palaca to whom it is, I can't tell you this date. But the information that was provided for me, I'm not sure if any other commissioner received that information or there was some additional information that you all may have received just in a different capacity. I provided that information to Mr. Bell. Mr. Bell interim did what he felt was proper. He looked into the matter because he did report back to me, because I was the one who gave him the information that was provided. Mr. Mr. Bell, as a result, notified the entire commission via email of what his findings were. So we did receive the information and as a part of his findings, Mr. Bell stated that he would like to bring in a independent to look and en, and inquire about the situation. So that's where we stand. We have been provided that information. That email was sent out one day last week with regards to his finding. I believe it was about two, two full pages of what transpired, how did we got here? And it addressed a number of different things within that particular email notification. So Mr. Bell, I feel, has done his due diligence with making sure that one, he looked into the matter. Because again, I was the one who provided him with the documentation that was provided to me anonymously in my mailbox. But then again, he did his due diligence. So I believe that he is fair in his ass to bring in an independent person to look into the matter.
Commissioner McCaskill?
I want to clarify that I did not question his practices. I just wanted to make sure when he brought to my attention, if that's something that we needed to consider on his behalf, if an inquiry, inquiry versus an investigation. I did not question his practices. I would like to answer your question. I did receive the information from a member in the community. And, um, I did provide Mr. Bell with that information as well. So, um, with the information as well, um, Mr. Bell did, um, as far as informing via email, he may have. But I do know that he informed me verbally. He asked me if I received anything in my mail and I had not. But immediately upon receiving the information, I did call Mr. Bell in and inform him about the information I received with two witnesses in the room and asked him to reach out to the individual to let the individual know of the allegations that were against him, but did not provide him the documentation. Now I can say this, when Mr. Bell did inform me about the information he received about the individual, he did inform me at that time, he did not have the packet and the information in his hand. So when I received it, I immediately informed, but I did let Mr. Bell know that I would not give him the information and to the person, um, the allegations were about were present. And, um, so that there can be, there, there could be no conflict, um, in the process of giving Mr. Bell the information and the, um, the, and, and individual saying that there was any conflict or altering of the documentation. So I don't know when he received it, but I know at the time when he informed me, which was two weeks prior to me receiving it, that he had not received any information. So I just want to make sure that's on the record.
So go ahead, Mr. Bell.
I believe I have what I need in order to move forward. So if you want to move to the next item on the agenda, uh, unless there's.
Sheffield did cement, did submit a comic, a comic card on this topic.
That, there is one other item. Well, I'll let Mr. Sheffield finish.
Please come on, Mr. Sheffield, name and address. Three minutes, three minutes.
Sheffield, 512 Mulholland Park.
Sheffield, five, one, two, Mulholland Park, Florida, three, two, one, seven, seven. Um commissioners, uh city manager, assistant city managers, very difficult situation. And the sunshine law makes it almost impossible um to really truly go through this. So I appreciate what you're doing in terms of deliberating and trying to get on the same page as to how to move forward with both of these. And you've gone through a lot, but what I haven't heard yet, and I just wanted to, maybe you you, this is something I I missed or and this is something that's already uh taken care of, but legal counsel with respect to since this is an HR matter and privacy, whether you're receiving or discussing where you're gonna get that guidance from, and even when you come back as a commission before this city, what you can and cannot comment on as a result of those investigations. I would just ask that you seek that so that you're protected, the city's protected and those being investigated are protected.
Thank you, Mrs. Sheffield.
Thank you, Mrs. Sheffield.
So, Madam Mayor. Uh with respect to the public hearing items, uh we have a gentleman that uh uh has been waiting for item C if you would. Thank you.
Talked about this before, uh the thing about coming to the meetings, you have to be and I understand we wanna take into consideration everyone else's time. But there are other individuals that may have been here that may have waited it out just long. So again, I'm friendly for it, but we've had this conversation before with regards to allowing individuals to be skipped. Again, that's the risk that you take when you come to a public meeting. Uh and again, to force to be fair and partial to everyone, I want us to take that in consideration as we move forward. Again.
Again, and then at this point, if we are, are we just done discussing the topics, um the investigations in both cases? So I will move on to eight A.
Are are we done?
Question, if we are done, I'll move on to eight A. Are we done?
We're done.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to say regarding to it? Okay, eight A, public hearings, Ms. Krantz.
I think.
Mayor, the request was to move agenda item eight C to the top of the public hearing agenda.
And my request was that we were rolled on, as we have been rolled on simply because there are other individuals that are here that have been waiting as well.
Right, and I was trying to respect Commissioner Campbell's input and just going down the agenda. It's there's only another item between that hopefully is the second reading that won't be an issue. A.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, presenting to the commission Resolution twenty twenty four, arm one thirty nine. And we do have a legal counsel approaching the that the podiums. A resolution of the City of Palaca, Florida approving the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five non ad valorem assessment role for fire protection services, facilities and programs. Directing certification of the assessment role and collection pursuant to the Uniform Assessment Collection Act. Confirming required statutory notice and imposing levying fire service assessments, providing directions, providing an effective date and providing for scrivener's errors. Thank you.
Good evening, and I wanna compliment everybody in this room for participation. This is a terrific community. You guys are doing a good job. I don't mind waiting the doggone bit. I watched something tonight. I've been doing this for thirty or forty years. You're all working hard on difficult issues. My name is Mark Lawson with MGLPA, along with Ened LLC and Dr. Owen Beich. We have a re- uh continuing contract with you to help you with your annual fire service non ad form assessment. This meeting is a public hearing. I will provide an introduction. I will listen carefully and try to answer what I can in the way of questions. This is a policy decision to be made tonight. We have clearly over time developed the infrastructure that would give you comfort that what you do is fair and reasonable. Proportionate, that's the most important thing, and benefits and burdens, covers the cost of benefits and burdens to property to partially fund a chunk of your budget. The discussion here reminds me tonight of the fact that over time, when I was a young man, I listened to George W., H. W. Bush say, read my lips, no new taxes. But what he didn't let the American people understand was the federal government controls the monetary system and it has deficit spending. What I saw you do tonight was listen carefully.
Um do you, is there a timer that you're desiring?
I'll be quick.
Okay, keep it as.
You let, you have to listen carefully because you have to balance your budget every year. And that was unfair for a federal person to say, no new taxes. You have to have revenue to pay for what you want. The Connie Lee House and the other items that come up, you have to find revenue. Now, this program has had the same rates for over ten years. It depends on the amount of improvement value being articulated by the property praiser and that naturally goes up. So the rates throughout the city have gone up over the years. You have to decide how much you need from the fire assessment to fund the fire department. It's about fifty-eight percent. And then you pay for the rest with your general taxes. This is a time for citizens who are interested to comment on your program and the assessments. Your role has been published. There's been an email site to receive requests for comments. I have none to report to you. I checked with your uh 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 staff today. No one has responded to that. That was published and it's on your website as well. I will sit down and listen to comments. When I'm done, I'd like to give you any kind of of information I can, but again, this is a policy decision that you all have to deal with. God bless you all. This is a nice place, but you've worked hard tonight.
Thank you. Um Stevenson's, since you're both. Name and address for the record, please.
Um Mandy Stevenson, four, one, five, Jackson Avenue, Palaca, Florida, three, two, one, seven, seven. Okay, I've been up here before and no, I do not know how to address all of you guys. I've just been up here high and keep her your work. Um, this fee, it needs to be capped, stopped, something. You're right. He did say everything keeps increasing, market value keeps increasing. You guys are getting money. It's increasing. Jobs, equipment, all those things are increasing, but when I look at my bill and I'm paying more for a fire fee than my property taxes, that's an issue. Okay, because one is assessed, one is market value. There's no reason why I should look at my tax roll and say, oh, my taxes aren't very much. Oh, wait, that's the fire fee that's like a thousand dollars. Why? My house is just a small house. I live in a small area. Just because houses sell around me for more doesn't mean mine should jump and you guys should get more money. Okay, and if he, even if it's a vacant lot, I have a brother-in-law that has a vacant lot. He pays a fee on a vacant lot. What are you guys gonna come out and do? Yeah, I mean, there there's nothing there, so why is he paying a fire fee? But this was designed to help the city. This was designed to help the millage rate. It has done that. We have prospered. We have come forward. We are moving forward. This needs to be stopped now. A cap, put something on it, just do something. You guys have to make a decision. I've come up here year after year. Do something, do better. I just, that's all I have. I just want you guys to do better because it's still not getting done. There's no discussion. When I leave, I never hear no discussions. I never see anything in the paper. I never see anything in the mail. I never see anything that is being done once I leave. I just don't get it. So what what does a person have to do? Leave a message on his site? I don't pay him. You guys pay him out of what we pay you. So it doesn't make any sense. I just, I just need better. I I need accountability and transparency on what to do and move forward.
And then a lot of us that live in the city now are actually talking, would it be cheaper to just be annexed out of the city?
And and I have talked to the mayor about that. I go to the county.
I mean, whatever that, whatever that cost is, is over the years, it's gotta be a lot less than this.
I have gone to the county and I did talk to the county about being released from the city. They said I had to have a letter formally from the city to be released. And then I can be in the county annex. I do not have city water. I do not have city sewer.
But we're on the city because of our road.
So.
No city utilities.
Yes. So this, I mean, it just keep, each year it just gets worse and worse. So that's why we're here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can we help them? Not being funny, but I wouldn't wanna be paying.
You you shouldn't be receiving a fire fee.
I remember.
Oh, I'm sorry, because you do have folks that live on the same road in summer, summer county and summer city.
So. One, there there's two on our road.
Okay, and and it's across the city. I've noticed that there are some, it happens. So what is it, whatever we can do.
Commissioner McCaskill, are you, are you finished? Okay, Commissioner Boron.
My my question is, um have you, I know you came in uh last year, year before last, and you were supposed to have been working with the city manager at the time. So did nobody help you after you?
This gentleman, the only one that reached out to me, that's it.
But I think you were supposed to work with the uh city manager and Mr. Lawson. Okay, so we'll, we will, we will work with you to get that address, especially if you're not in the city.
Oh, okay, I will clarify. I'm sorry.
You have to come up to the podium. We can't have this back and forth dialogue.
We are drawn into the city.
We did after the meeting, Terrell, Mr. Mr. Hill, he did say for us to talk to Jonathan at the time. We did talk with Jonathan. He remembered our situation because the city of Palaca, the housing, they came out, Palaca Housing, the gas authority, they did come out their house. And that's when they determined, why are you guys paying city water and city sewer? They did the test, they did all that. We got money back from the city for one year for paying for X twenty something years. Um, and so they said, all right. And so that's when I talked to the mayor because there was nothing being done. She had just been in office. No one talked about what they're gonna do with this tax fee, no cap, no nothing. And it was just dropped. This gentleman talked to me and nobody went anywhere with it. Jonathan did tell me if I paid fifteen hundred dollars and filled out thirteen sheets of paper that he would inquire what to do.
All right, well, we, well, we, we, we're, we're, I was in conversation with, right, so we have, I see the manager here. You need to work with him to get that address. Whatever it takes to get you, especially if you're not um annexed into the.
But why is that at the expense of me?
And that's what I wanna address.
He's, he's got the, he's got the look, we, if we, you, you, you've communicated the problem, right? So we're gonna see what we can do to assist or aid you.
I got it.
It's not at the expense if we're trying to help you. We know that you've spoken with people in the past.
Yes, sir.
Let us help you uh right now.
Okay, and and I appreciate that and I respect that and and I I I will reach out. You can reach out. I'll give you my number. But how does that help the rest of the city of Palaca?
That's the question.
Okay, how did, how, because even though I'm one individual and I kinda got through the cracks, how does that help the city of Palaca, the rest of us residents that are struggling? I mean, there's many people that are in the city limits that are on fixed budgets and they live in houses and they're not selling theirs, but people around them are and their market value is going up and they can't pay this fee. There has to be a cap on this. That's my concern. I mean, I'm dealing with it and I'm paying with it. It upsets me. But I've moved past it. I just think that there should be a cap. It was not discussed when this was brought out ten years ago or however long, it was not discussed how long the duration would last. And I think that that warrants an investigation or a inquiry into stopping this or putting a limit.
I I hear what you're saying, and and here's, here's what we have. Uh our, our millage rate at one point was nine point one four seven. We were eleventh in the state of Florida as it related to highest millage rate.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what we did along with. What we did along with other cities who um um had, would have been taken advantage of by some other, other entities who are not paying into the tax base, but utilizing all of the various infrastructures and services that we have. We broke it out. So you got your uh your, your base millage rate for what you're, your home or your business. It went from nine point one four seven eight to s- initially seven, initially six point. No, no, seven. It was, it was, it was, I think it was about seven. Then we dropped it to six point four five. Six point two five. So we we dropped it to that point. So you have a bit of a break there on your you, you gotta, you gotta know how that, you, you, you have to know how, you have to know how the whole millage rate work in order to be able to see that that the reduction, the reduction in your uh in your amount. You were paying nine dollars and uh nine, nine dollars and forty, one, nine and nine dollars and fourteen cent per thousand dollars of your.
But not on market rate.
You were, you were paying nine dollars and fourteen cent per thousand dollars on your overall value of your home.
Yes.
Okay, so you went from nine, one, four, seven to six point four.
Yes, sir.
So now you're, you're saving the three dollar, almost two dollars and something. You you're saving on that portion of it. You drop down to the fire fee. The fire fee was two point four six, two point four six.
Yes, sir.
Two dollars and forty-six cent per thousand dollars of assessed value plus two hundred dollars per parcel.
Correct.
Okay, so, so right there is where your um, you you're, you're um the home value, if your home value is two, two hundred thousand, you're paying um two hundred and some or right at two hundred some dollars per year for that tax. So you're combined from your uh base millage and your fire fee together. Now, I'm gonna tell you this, you're getting other taxes. You gotta know what the city is hitting you for.
Talked to Robbie several times. And let me comment on what you just said. I just have one thing to say.
Okay. But I like to, I don't like to, I don't like to actually look at it too because I I I very well understand how, how all of that works.
Well, let me kinda explain how the millage rate works. It was nine percent based upon your assessed value. If you've been in your house thirty years, your assessed value is way down here. Okay, so if you take that nine percent and make it six percent, you think you save three percent, right? But when they come in and your tax assessed, um your fire tax.
It's a fire.
When your fire tax comes in and it's, and it's based upon now not your assessed value, but your market value which has skyrocketed in the last ten years, okay? Now you're paying somewhere around twenty percent on your millage, and that's how math works.
Yes.
Well, I very well understand how math works. I mean, that's why I was trying to help explain how the millage rate work, but well, I'm, I'm talking there. I'm talking right now.
Twenty years.
I'm talking right now. So that's, that, that's what we, that's why we had a level of disrespect. But again, so that. I wasn't finished, but anyways, uh what, you need to allow for when I have the floor, anybody else on the dais have the floor, you need to respect that and and everybody else need to do the same. So I wasn't finished, I'm finishing up now, but I very well understand how the whole millage rate, rate thing, rate work. I would like to see your overall thing, if you would like to, if you, if you don't mind working with me on that.
Yes, sir, and and I appreciate that and not to catch off, but this, and you have seen me up here several times.
Yes.
And and so I do understand how it works and I know you're behind there and you know how it works. But as a normal Joe that just lives in the city of Palaca, when you are not, and and there's other people, especially down here around the city limits down here. I I mean, I kinda don't live in the city limits, but people that are not moving out of their homes because they can't afford to, they're also not being able to afford to live in their home. Okay, and because it did come down, we do wanna kinda be like this. I understand that. We do want the millage rate to stay low. We do need this fire assessment fee to help balance the budget. I understand that. It works like this, not like this. It was like this, it needs to come to this.
I I understand what you're saying, but again, I thought that you were helped. I mean, we, I only saw you.
But but this is not helping the city of Palaca.
I understand that, but your issue that you're bringing forth will help us to look at the entire city. And we need more people like, like you to come out, and so that's, we we're here to help.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner McCaskill.
I just, willing, Mr. Jones, Commissioner Jones, do you have anything to add because you seem to.
Can I get my.
Can I get my part? And that's where I was. So you know you eat a, eat an elephant one bite at a time, and just to bring it all together, I think we've informed you what would be a good practice if you get with the city manager, Mr. Mark Lawson, the attorney, finance, whoever they decide to get to the table and address your issue, and from there, they will have guidance in addressing the rest of the folks that are having the same issue. And I think that we can cap it right there, if that's okay to give me.
Yes, it is, thank you, Commissioner Jones.
I'm a solutionist, and I think that, I hear you loud and clear, because I have a problem with that fire assessment myself. One of the reasons why I ran for office is to speak to people like you, like me and everybody else in here. That fire assessment fee, I remember when it came up about ten years ago, and they did say that they would lower it when needed, when necessary, when they have gotten the millage under control, and, uh, I talked to Mark Lawson today, because I asked him, how can we lower it for all citizens? And, um, that's something that we're challenged with today, um, Commissioner. How can we? Can we do it? And I'm gonna challenge a finance, a city manager to come up with a solution that's gonna give the citizens a reprieve. We have to do it. And if that means trimming the fat in our departments, we need to do it. We need to look at that hard and fast, and we wanna give our employees the tools that they need to do their job, but we also have to be cognizant that this citizens in the city is double taxed, you get city tax and county tax. And this fire assessment is considered the most a third tax. So my challenge to you, Mr. Larson, Ms. Cardy, Mr. Bell, come up with a solution where we could lose, I think we said, three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, you can come up, Mr. Larson, right now, I wanna give you the.
Are we dealing with public comments?
Yes, because you're gonna help me convey this thought that I spoke to you.
No, you have to come, no, no.
We, we're gonna move past that. Come on, Mr. Larson. Please, please speak to the.
I will do that, because it's a public hearing typically.
Does any other, for, any other public comment first, please, and that, you've already had your moment.
Okay, I won't call Mr. Larson, you can, you can have a seat. No, you can have a seat.
Are there any further public comments?
I haven't finished.
Well. I'm, okay, go ahead.
We're not even supposed to be talking during public.
Mr. Larson, you go back.
Right.
I was giving the feedback to the young lady who asked the question and asked for me specifically, and I'm gonna be deprived.
We're not supposed to.
So, to answer your question, you wanted action, those are the directives I gave, okay?
And we will try and follow up.
Okay, don't, please don't do that, please.
Can, can we bring, uh, so, uh, from my understanding, and I wanna bring legal in, during this portion of, um, conversation, we are to be listening, we're not to be responding, and I want us to be clear on that, we are out of order. We've been out of order.
Yes.
So again, legal, if there's ever a time that we are operating outside of what, please steer us back in the right direction, because this conversation has gone on too long, and as a result, we've gotten nowhere, and I'm not ignoring, we're supposed to be listening to the citizens at this moment, uh, at this moment. That's what it was identified for, to give them the opportunity to say what they have to say, and it's not supposed to be going a back and forth at this moment. Because again, it's public hearing, public comment, we listen, we don't do it at the beginning of the meeting, and we don't do it at this part of the meeting as well.
And that is why I called Point of Order on a couple of occasions without success. It cannot be.
But Mary, it's not without success, you are the facilitator of this group, so at some point, point of order means we're supposed to cease, and you're supposed to steer us back in the right direction or bring counsel in to make sure. So again, we are out of order.
I, oh, I agree, and we, we're not all here to even hear that. So, okay, um, at this point, is there anybody else here for public comment? Ms. Kitchens, please fill out a card.
Mark it on the one I've already filled out. Um, at, at the expense of being called trying to run the commission again, I'm exercising my First Amendment rights of, uh, freedom of speech and addressing my grievances to my public officials. Don't raise the fire tax, the fire fee, and leave it at what it is, if you're not gonna lower it, but don't raise it. As the assessed value goes, the marketable value goes up, then the tax bill is, the, the fire tax is going to go up as the marketable value, assessed value goes up, then the fire fee is going to go up. But leave it at the set rate that it is, two dollars and forty-six cents per one thousand, plus one hundred and twenty-five dollars for land, unless you want to lower it, but leave it, don't, don't raise the fire fee, please. If you do anything, lower it, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here for public comment? Seeing none, we close on the comment. Mr. Lawson.
Thank you. This was a public hearing, and I've done a lot of them. I, uh, did make some notes. I let my page flip shut, and I, let me, I can fumble around and find that, but let me just talk from my knowledge. First of all, Ms. Kitchens is right, but the discussion got off track in the sense that the approach you take only looks at one aspect of the changes that the property appraiser makes every year. It looks at only the change in improvements, not land that's taken out. So when people talk about marketable value, that's just value sometimes, and what we do, and what your approach has been validated to do, it subtracts the land value from that to have the improvement value. So it doesn't go up because it's not as much value placed on it, number one. Number two, I think I learned something tonight, I talked to these folks, they're nice folks, they're emotional, it's good. I think I would like to look at how long they've been in their house, because our state passed a law years ago called, i- i- it helped with homesteads, save our homes. What it does, it locks in value if you move in and you stay there for a long time. Someone who moves in, two houses can be identical, you can live in one, and you can move into the identical one next to it five years later, your tax bill will be a lot lower because you have saved our homes. This program doesn't look at save our homes, because that was an unpaid for mandate by the legislature to cities and counties around the state, because they don't live on taxes, they live on sales taxes. Nevertheless, I want to get to the bottom of that, Mr. Manager and Commission, we will use them as a case example and look at that and try to figure those things out. The issue about the email is not to me, it goes to the city. And she did not receive any except my test email, it was published in the paper and on the website. The reality is, very few people have raised this issue. There are very, there are a few vocal people, and that's good, I'm great on that, and you have two, sir. So I think it's, uh, very important to understand, Ms. Kitchen's right. If you raise it, then you would be multiplying it, that is not what's proposed here at all. And then, I would say to you, you're having a budget hearing tomorrow, and this is a hard decision you'll have to make. If you adopt this tonight, and I recommend you do, so your staff knows what you've done in terms of budgeting, okay? But it's not final till your budget's final, and if you choose to say, listen, we're gonna choose to fund less with the fire side, then that will be part of a larger budget conversation where you say, okay, we'll cut two, three, five hundred thousand. And then you'll have two, three, five hundred thousand dollars less in your fund, because my guess is you're really not gonna cut your fire department budget that much. The point is, there's a priority of expenditure. Your insurance rates in this community depend on the ISO rating. You might cut it fifty thousand, if there's a union member here, they're shriveling, because that's tarred, because that's your most expensive labor for that reason. It's also your most expensive labor is because it's twenty-four seven, three shifts a day, just like police. It's one of your biggest expenses, and it's an availability expense. So who serves? You serve. These folks' property and everybody else in your community. Now, that I wanted to make clear, it's not a fee, it's not a tax, it's as proportionate as it can be, because the state Supreme Court has said it's got a benefit property or relieve of burden, it clearly does. It has to be fair and reasonably apportioned, that's your job, but the Supreme Court said, we're not gonna tell you how to do that, you've gotta try to figure out for yourself. Here's what the Supreme Court has said, it must be proportionate. And you have a final judgment in Circuit Court that says it's proportionate, and I know Mrs. Kitchen will tell me the same thing, because all we do is look at that improvement value on one, one of those two charges, and we say, charge your property, Commissioner Jones, in proportion to all of their properties in the community, including the folks that speak out here. They have likely a larger amount of improvement on that property than someone who lives in a very small house somewhere else. Each pay proportionally, and then, because of availability, every parcel in the city pays one hundred and twenty-five dollars, and therein lies the answer to the vacant lot. Two houses with, or two, two lots with a house on it, then two vacant lots, then three houses built out. Those two vacant lots only pay one twenty-five. That at least allow them to carry a share of that availability, because what could they do tomorrow? They could go down to your department and pull a permit and build a home, and why should they not pay to help pay for the cost of fire over the years while they hold that lot? So that's a nominal charge, you're paying no improvement value, they're only paying for that. That's why we devised this approach, because people would come to us and say, what about the guy who has all, what about the developer who has twelve hundred lots out back? That's the other issue. I try to do my best, I started the, the, the procedure with, this is a policy decision. My suggestion to you is, we've heard this over the years, I enjoy this community, I really, and I meant it, my heart aches for you to listen to what went on here tonight on several fronts with, we need money, we gotta do this. Tomorrow your budget comes up, the age-old problem is you can't deficit spend, you have to balance your budget. I want to help you, my best suggestion to you is, adopt the resolution, if you're feeling you need to change it, we'll help you get you some numbers, so you can feel with a pain if you'd take it down a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, whatever. I can help you with that, so you can get a feel for it, because I think what I understand is, this is a situation where you're trying to, what if, what if, what if, what if? You've had a suggestion, let's cap it. If you do that, you fall behind slowly every year. If you keep up with the way you do it, it slowly grows. It may be to the, to the dislike of some, but what it's done is helped you dig out of that hole ten years ago, and it's helped you keep up. It's not gone up nearly as much as the overall cost of things. And my point is, if you, I wanna, I wanna examine and do that math on what happened with save our homes, because of the comment the gentleman made, that merits, uh, investigation, inquiry, understanding.
Commissioner Boreum.
But, yes, Mr. Lawson is absolutely correct, because again, uh, when this, uh, uh, ten years ago, the city was not in a position to even do anything as it relates to infrastructure, because for, for one thing, we could not even make, our bond rating was garbage, garbage. And so, the, the city had no infrastructure in place, we had about four, um, water main breaks a month. Uh, you can go back and look at the numbers, it's in the, uh, the city couldn't balance its budget, uh, borrowing or taking three and four hundred thousand dollars, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, go look at, go look at the CAFRA, it's, it's in there. But we, the city could not do anything as it relates to even going and, uh, making a loan to try to, uh, bu- build a building. So what we did do, we used the tools that people had been kicking the can down the road for years, and we made a tough decision to go ahead and put the fire fee in place.
I love you, it's not a fee, it's, they're different, fees and taxes are different, but I go ahead.
What I'm saying, we, 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 we did, we did the reconstruction on, on the whole deal, and so it put us in a better position to be able to do a nu- the number of things that we're currently doing now. Can we do things better with the budget? Yes, we can. We've had, um, surplus in our budget, it helps us to, it helped us to get our, um, reserve up. The city had no reserve during that time. Long story short, so I'm just giving you a little bit of telemetry on how all of this stuff worked and how it helped the city out. So I know everybody is in a rush to leave, but you need some education around this stuff.
Thank you.
So, so now we are almost over twenty miles of infrastructure, water lines that we have put in place as a result of that. We have increased our, our re- our, our reserve. If you don't have reserve, our reserve was about, about four or five hundred thousand dollars, you can't even operate a month on that in the city. So if you have an emergency, you can't, you, you don't have to wait, wait on the federal government to come in and bail you out. We put this city back on solid ground, so that's where we're at right now. We can always look at trying to, uh, adjust the, the rate, we can do that. But again, there's a number of other things that the city has been doing against my fiscal responsibilities, and we get this money built up, we could do better by not wasting this money. So, and you can go back and look at the records as it relates to that, and the video, and, and, and what's in, what's in the minutes. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Oh, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, I, I really appreciate that, I really do.
Okay, we have a rel- resolution before us. You read the resolution, I've kind of lost track.
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Okay, thank you. So we have the resolution, do we have a motion?
Second.
There are motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Thank you.
I will work hard to help you get information.
Thank you.
I wish I could stay for a while longer to watch out.
I'll quickly, Ms. Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Boreum, rather.
Uh, Mr. Lawson, uh, also. Mr. Lawson, also, also, a, a, a added bonus for the, for the community as it relates to the fire fee and them, them not having to pay for each individual lot. You can go and file and, 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 and come.
Combine them.
Combine your lots, and you pay one fee as opposed to paying for each lot. So that's a, that's another little small savings you can have in your, in your pocket.
Whatever the property appraiser does, we follow.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You good?
Okay, we'll let it, I'll let it go.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. On to, um, the, Ms. Krantz.
Thank you. Presenting to the commission for second reading, this is ordinance number twenty twenty-four oh six, an ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, providing urban home setting standards for the raising and keeping of domestic fowl and residential zoning, prohibiting roosters, providing conflicts, severability, repeal, scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Thank you. It's the second reading, so I don't think we need to hear any more information. I'm gonna open the floor to public comment, is there anybody here for public comment on this item? Seeing none, we close public comment. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have motion, a second, all in favor? Aye, any opposition?
Nay.
Your motion passed for number one.
Thank you. On to C, so for Mr. Wise can have a, a moment, um, Ms. Krantz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a two-part, it's a small, it's a future land use map amendment along with a rezoning, um, presenting to you for adoption, ordinance number twenty twenty-four oh seven, an ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, providing that the future land use map be adopted if the comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, which is less than fifty acres in size, from the city of Palaca Commercial to the city of Palaca Residential Loa for the following property located on Kelly Smith School Road, Palaca, Florida, three two one seven seven. Parcels number zero nine, ten, twenty-six, zero two one three, four zeros, zero zero one zero, zero nine, ten, twenty-six, zero two one three, four zeros, zero, zero two zero, and zero nine, ten, twenty-six, zero two one three, four zeros, zero zero three zero, continues to the boundaries of the city of Palaca, providing for scrivener's errors and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mrs. Gani.
Madam Mayor, commissioners, as Sunny had pointed out, this is small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, uh, and a rezoning for a three-lot residential subdivision that is located on the north side of Kelly Smith Road between Round Lake Road and Gale Lane, totally approximately zero point five one acres. This item was discussed by the city commission on, at the June thirteen meeting, and it was continued to today's hearing, This item was discussed by the city commission on, at the June thirteenth meeting, and it was continued to today's hearing. In order for staff to add additional information, also some pictures of the site. Uh, the pictures were attached or are attached to the, to the package that you receive. And I also, uh, included, uh, an update staff report that provided with the chronology uh, related to this parcel, to the whole parcel and to the three lots that were created. Uh, let me just put it out to, to you that the, the parent parcel where these three lots were plotted was annexed to the city on June ninth, two thousand and five through an ordinance number oh five twenty-eight. Then on October twelfth, twenty twenty-two, the last split application was filed with the city and was approved by the city. On March twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three, the county appraiser assigned a new parcel number to this newly created lot. On April fourth, twenty twenty-three, the Palma County, uh, Emergency Division assigned an address to the new lot. And the address is one thirty-four Kelly Smith Road, Palaca. On February ninth, twenty twenty-three, the city commission approved a request for one thirty-four Kelly Smith Road to amend the future line use from commercial to residential low through ordinance twenty twenty-three oh three. And resound the property from general commercial, C-one, to single-family district, R-one by adopting ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh four. Subsequently to that, Palma County issued a building permit for a single-family home on November second, twenty twenty-three. And that house is still under construction, as you can see from the picture. On May ninth, twenty twenty-three, with the remainder of the other parcel, an application for a preliminary plat to create a three-lot residential subdivision was submitted to the city. The final plat application known as Azilia Place Subdivision Phase Two was approved by the city commission on March fourteen, twenty twenty-four through resolution number twenty twenty-four R fifty-seven. At the last hearing in June thirteenth, Mr. Wise addressed this board. And since then, I have a meeting with Mr. Wise, and I provided all this information that I'm relating to you today. Uh, staff still recommends that you adopt the ordinance, both ordinance, changing the future line use map of these three lots and also rezoning. And I'm here to answer any question you might have.
Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Agami?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Jones.
So I, I kind of got a little confused, uh, with the, the dates that you said. That, that lot was commercial and then it was requested to be residential. What was that date?
The day was February ninth, twenty twenty-three.
February.
February ninth, one twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three.
When was the house built on that lot?
That's a separate parcel.
It still had the construction. The, the permit was issued in November.
One thirty-four.
One thirty-four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
The, the permit was issued in November second, twenty twenty-three. That was after it was resolved by the, by the city commission. The city commission resolved a lot to R-one residential.
So and I think we can, I was confused because the lot itself was, uh, the notice said seventy-three forty-one Creole Avenue. Tell me where, tell me how that confused.
That, that was a mistake. That was a mistake in, in the advertising. Because.
You did advertising?
Sorry?
Did you do the advertising?
Well, my department did, yes. What happened was that for some reason, it was a different sequence. Usually when you approve a plat, you also approve the rezoning and the future land use amendment at the same meeting. For some reason, that didn't happen with this one. It went first to the planning board in March for the rezoning. And the, the final plat was approved by the commission in April. So when the advertising was put into the newspaper, they used the, the original one that went to the planning board. And that was the correct address because the lots were not plotted yet. So that was a mistake and that created a lot of confusion.
Okay, so when you, when confusion is created, mistakes and errors are made.
Mm-hmm.
That's kind of misleading. So we're talking about it's very misleading because the I wouldn't say stand up and point to it, but, uh, seventy-three forty-one Creole Avenue. Can you point to the top of that lot, Sunny? It's right there. That's the area that came before the board commission. Okay, so all, and if it was an error, we should have known about it. Then we have people to, to be noticed about the zoning change. Or you think they're talking about the zoning on that business quarter there. Actually, it, I won't say this, I won't use the word deception. But it's not clear, it was never clear, that you're actually talking about the back half of that lot, which is totally different street.
Mm-hmm.
Totally.
I think I pointed out that at the last meeting.
No, you had to confuse the last meeting.
June thirteenth, I told this commission that what you, what was in front of you were those three lots that were plotted and approved by this city commission back in April.
Prior to Mr. Agami's involvement.
Who's Mr. Agami?
Oh.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I always tell you Lorenzo, I'm sorry.
He was not the planning director of that.
He doesn't have his glasses, so he.
Okay, okay.
It's okay. We all, we all make.
Forgive me for not. So, with all jokes aside, so.
Good thing yours is Jones.
It's, it is very, it was, it was very misleading there. And, um, yes, when we approve these things, uh, these things should be clarified. Any error should have come back to us. And if, and actually, if it wasn't pointed out by a citizen, we wouldn't have never we probably would have approved this again going forward. We did ask prior when people are asking landowner, homeowner, property owner, asking for any changes that they're up here to actually present what they're asking us to do. And I really don't recall that taking place. Now, this is the second time this has come before us. And we have discovered that it actually belonged to staff. Now, that's a whole different can of worms. And we had a complaint in reference to it.
So the shit are all I'm addressing here in front of you is
Yeah.
is, is the rezoning and the future land use amendment.
So you, you brought forth an error. How do we correct the error? What if?
I mean, what you have in front of you today is clear. The error, you know, has been corrected. It was advertised, you know, the way it should be. It doesn't show to be Creole Avenue anymore. It shows just that the, 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 the legal description of the parcels.
So I, it formerly property located at seventy-three forty-one Creole Avenue. That's what it says.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what it said.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because it doesn't have an address yet. The parcel were plotted, it was approved.
So, so.
They have to get a rezoning.
Before this, this, I would like for them to come explain to us. How did it occur?
Uh, Mr. Kennedy, what, we have other commissioners that want to speak, but Mr. Kennedy, come up. We usually have presentations first, and then we will come back to all of you folks.
Okay, it, it was kind of along the side of what he asked, and it's just simple.
Please.
You know, and we may not even have to come back to it if you don't mind, Madam Mayor. It's up to you. I just want to ask. Mr. Jones asked him, um, uh, who, who approved the advertising? And his response was, oh, my department approved that. Who in your?
I am responsible for it. You know, my staff, my, my staff repaired it and.
Your staff reviewed it, then you go over and review it and you catch the error.
It was a mistake.
Okay.
They just put a new, the advertising that was for the planning board meeting in March. That, they just used the same.
Okay.
And that was a mistake.
And then you said the mistake was brought before us Ju- in June thirteenth?
At the hearing, I think I pointed out that was a mistake.
So I, I just would like for the notes, I, I guess I'll ask if, to make it easy to rev- to review the notes to make sure that we were, we were properly notified.
Yeah.
That's just it, and I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the courtesy, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Kennedy, are you coming up? Thank you. Name, please, and address.
Patrick Kennedy, six seventy-three Third Avenue, Wallack, Florida. I'm here on behalf of the applicants. The applicant's actually JJJ T-one LLC. It's a, an LLC. The primary managers are Toby, um, McGeehan, and I'm just learning the second person's name, uh, Joshua Anderson. There is also, uh, Nextdoor Real Estate is a, uh, a limited partner involved in the deal, but they're not involved in the development of the property. But the, uh, the one thing I will say about your notice, if you want to jump to that, is you guys actually do more notice than you're required to. So on these rezonings, you have a map highlighting the lots with an arrow pointing to it in addition to the legal descriptions. And that's more than is required for a rezoning like this. So you actually should be, uh, commended for spending the extra money and going above and beyond, uh, as far as your newspaper notice goes.
So, so you're representing?
Yes, yes.
Were you here that?
I was not, no. I, I just got involved in the last week or so.
Last week?
Yeah.
Ah, so that's why you just learned the second person's name?
Yes, yeah. Well, I knew the, I knew the LLC's name, but it, it was, uh, mentioned to me it might come up, who is, who's involved in the LLCs. So I pulled up the, uh.
Well, who is, who is the name in the LLCs?
Toby McGeehan, Joshua Anderson, and then, uh, Nextdoor Real Estate LLC is a limited partner, listed as a limited partner.
And who is next? Are you the name one? Who's the, where's the other one?
Joshua Anderson, whose name he.
Joshua Anderson. Those are the two, uh, managers of the LLC.
That's the name of the.
They're listed as a limited partnership.
Who's, there's no owners?
They're not going to be involved in the development. They, they do have a, a, an ownership interest in the land as a member of the LLC.
I hear your question answered.
You'd never answered the Nextdoor, uh, the Nextdoor, who's, who's part of Nextdoor?
Uh, your assistant city manager is part of Nextdoor. I believe, uh, uh, I'd have to look it up and make sure, but I believe, uh, Mr. Douglas is also part of Nextdoor.
Brought that out. You said the other one, but.
No, but they're not, well, next, if you look at how it's managed and arranged.
Transparent, just across the board, just completely transparent.
No, no, uh, fair enough. But, uh, in any event, uh, they do have a, a minor ownership interest in this. X Door Realty, which has uh, there's, there's another member of that as well. I'd have to look it up, but.
I feel like you should address this matter, being that this was something that was brought before the commission.
Thank you.
Me too.
And it being inquired, I believe that this should be tabled into that has, that inquiry has been concluded.
I agree with that, Commissioner Campbell.
And, and, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try to talk you out of it, but
Here's what we.
If I may, if I may.
Other comment, he's Seminole Khan, he deserves that.
And his time is up.
That's just what.
Well.
Time is over.
Yes, I know, I know.
Well, I think, I also, I also think the applicant has, should have more than three minutes to speak on a hearing.
Has the bill of reasonable, and we, we, you asked him a lot of questions, but he didn't really get to the heart of the matter. Please finish, Mr. Kennedy.
Yeah. What we're talking about here is a, is a rezoning. I mean, that's, it does residential make sense at this location at this time. It's not about who owns the property. When you rezone property, ownership isn't the consideration. It's, does the land use make sense at this location? Whether, uh, uh, your assistant city manager has a, an ownership interest or not, that's the question that you're being asked to answer. So I, I don't understand but what the conflict really is, but I'm not involved in that whole investigation. But the fact that you have a staff member who owns property in your, in your town and wants to rezon it shouldn't present a problem. If zoning makes sense.
Yep.
So I, I mean.
He had, well, he does have a.
Going by what you said.
Okay. He does have.
Nextdoor Real Estate has an interest. He has an interest in Nextdoor Real Estate.
No, 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 no. Because I'm trying, I'm, I'm, let's move on because we've already stated as a result of what has been brought before us that we feel that it's in the best interest that we do not take any actions with regards to this so that the conclusion of the inquiry, if there is anything that needs to come back to us that may have been founded, that it comes back at that time. If it comes back here, let's move forward. But if not, there are some things that we have to do, the people that sit behind this diocese, that we have to take control over. So I understand your position because you just jumped in in the weekend. You're getting paid to do this. And if you're doing it pro bono, I commend you. But again, we as a commission have a job to do and we're doing it.
Well, yeah, and I, I have a job to explain.
That goes back to you, um, governing the meeting. We just asked.
Right. I was asking, yes, and if you are finished up, Mr. Kennedy.
Yes. Well, again, it's already been subdivided. The plan is to create residential lots at this location. And all we're asking for is residential zoning. So that's, it's, it's not, uh, shouldn't be.
I mean, Commissioner Borm, excuse me.
Um, my, my only issues is going back up to Creole. That's that was presented to the commission. It's not a small error in omission. That's a, that's a big, big, big difference. And we voted on something that was presented to us at seventy-three forty-one Creole Avenue. And that is a totally different location, whether it was a, a typo or whatever. The geographical location is way different. Seventy-three forty-one Creole.
To be clarified, there's again some confusion here. That was, there is no known address, but that was, go ahead, Mr. Agami.
That's what I voted on.
You voted the rezoning last year, last February on a lot that was created, so it's, it's split lot. That was created back in twenty twenty-three.
That's referring to the smaller.
So the one thirty-four, right? You, you're referring to one thirty-four.
I'm referring to seventy-three forty-one.
Right, but that's a big parcel that was, they created two, two parcels. I mean, they created two lots, the big parcel and one thirty-four, which eventually got one thirty-four as an address. That was a lot created that was resoned by this, by this board to R-one back in February twenty twenty-three.
Okay. But the total lot was addressed as Creole, correct, before it was?
Because, because it hadn't been, at that point, where the advertising was put in, it will have not, it didn't get a final plat approval at that point.
Yeah.
So you couldn't put, you know, an address.
I know. I get it. I'm just trying.
But what is in front of you today are those three lots subdivided, plotted, and approved by this commission. And they're asking for a rezoning.
Okay, thank you.
Right now, it's still commercial, right?
Yes.
Right now, it's still commercial.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and, but again, the whole point of subdividing was to create the residential lots, which you can't do with commercial zoning.
Thank you. We're going to have Mr. Wise come up, please, for public comment. Thank you. And give your name and address to the record and our apologies, um, again.
First thing I'd like to do is, uh, is thank for Mr. Jones and city manager and Mr. Lorenzo for helping me with some things in this situation.
Okay. Would you give your name and address though, please? But I don't want to interrupt you, but could you give your name and address, please, for the record?
Let me tell you who I am.
Yes, please.
Robert A. Wise, one fifty Kelly Smith School Road, Wallack, Florida, three two one seven seven.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I appreciate that. And I, and on the same token, I'd like to apologize to everybody that I misstated some things that I wasn't fully aware of. Because this has been so confusing to me. This property, from the inception of it, when it was annexed into the city, was zoned commercial. And it's been zoned commercial ever since that I can remember. And when it started advertising these, this, uh, uh, subdivision, it was advertised as, uh, seventy-three forty-one or whatever it was, Creole Avenue. Like I said before, I brought up, uh, who's going, how they're going to have the, uh, the in and out of it was going to be on Highway twenty. But that's where the, the address was. But I was informed that they, they couldn't do that. They have to go through Kelly Smith School Road. But I've learned that I've never received notices on this twenty twenty-three subdivided residential and all of this. They might have been mailed out, but I didn't receive one. But I've come to every meeting that I've can't, have come to regarding this property, even back with Mr. Carl Flagler, mayor, I came to the meeting. But, uh, it's very confusing, the way it's been done. It's been very misleading to me. But I live right there on the corner, and I've watched things happen. And I don't know, still don't know, how they can go in and, and divide this thing up and put houses on it, but it's still zoned commercial. I don't know. I don't, that's the dilemma to me. And it's not for me to straighten it out. And I, I would request, if something like this comes up, there'd be a lot of due diligence into it.
Yes.
To see how it's done and the proper procedures that needs to be taken to correct this kind of confusion. Uh, I appreciate your time and all, but, uh, I would like to say one thing. The city went out there and cut a trench across that road, Kettis Smith School Road, and through all this rain, it's about that deep. It's been there ever since the last, the day after the last meeting, they started working that road, cutting across it, put water lines and sewer lines across from the pumping station scoop. And it's still got a, my big trench across there. But, uh, I know that y'all have a job to do, and I commend you for it. But I don't want to be out of order, but I'm gonna say what I gotta say.
That's right.
If that's all right. When y'all having a problem, you have a discussion that involves eternal, internal situations. Put it at the end of the meeting. I've sat over two hours listening to y'all, and I commend y'all the way you conduct yourself most of the time. But, uh, it would help people like me. I got a wife home that's at home bound. I'd spend about three hours away from her right now. You know, so if y'all got some discussions like y'all had tonight, y'all need to put it to the end of it, and let us poor citizens have our say and go on home. Then y'all can hash it out. Okay?
Thank you, Mr.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Let me ask you one other question. One question.
Give a change.
Yes.
This is clear, just clear, so, because he, he could have been made allegation. Was that a city? City employees that cut across the roadway?
Somebody did. They, they had to get it off that pump, from that pump, that station right there.
Point of order, we're supposed, there is some investigations. That's not appropriate.
That is appropriate.
We'll wait for the investigation.
Thank you, Mr. Wise.
Thank y'all very much.
Um, I know, so what, how, moving forward, we have seen, um, do we have a motion to approve?
Oh, I made the recommendation.
Okay, that's no, I know that. I'm just trying to see.
This, this table.
It hasn't been voted on yet. We, we, we need to have that vote.
I, I made motion to deny the request.
Second.
Wait a minute, wait, stop. We had a motion on the table to table. On the floor to table. We have a motion to table. Do we have a second? Do you have a motion, a second to that? Okay, motion is die.
Okay, so just a reminder, because this is a land use change under our comp plan and also a rezoning, that does trigger the fact that it's a quasi judicial hearing and also a quasi legislative hearing. Um, so you, you do need to keep that in mind as you progress forward, um, if you need any clarification.
Why I made the motion to table, which would be the appropriate method to move forward.
I, I, y'all shut it down. I make a motion to deny the request.
We had a motion to table, and that was did not receive a second. You've made a motion to deny the request. But go ahead, Ms. West first, let students.
So, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. France, can you please put up the slides? So the first phase of it is comprehensive plan amendments. You're sitting in your quasi legislative capacity, because you're actually changing the policy of the city. The applicant has the burden of proof on that to show that it's consistent with the, the comp plan. The city's decision will be presumed, uh, to be correct and sustained so long as it is fairly debatable. So if you are making a decision that is not fairly debatable based upon what has been presented to you today, there is potential liability. If you are not comfortable with making a yes or up or down vote on this, I suggest tabling it and directing staff to provide additional information that would allay some of whatever your concerns might be. But just keep in mind, and then if you could please go to the quasi judicial, Ms. France. Here, you're acting in your judicial capacity. You're acting as a judge to interpret the policy of the city to see if the rezoning complies with existing parties. And the applicant for a rezoning has the burden of proof to show that the land use change is supported by competent substantial evidence. If you downvote, you are saying that they have not met their burden of competent substantial evidence. I'm just putting these out there because there is potential legal liability if it's a downvote. If you wanted to table it and direct staff to get more information, that would subject us to less potential liability.
Okay, with that, I'm being understood. I say that my, my, my reasons for it, I think it creates urban sprawl. Urban sprawl will, where, where, we are picking and choosing where we want to be in the city, where we want the city to be, just like those folks right there.
Hold on, hold on, fellow commissioner. Let us at least, um, do the table. Second, open it for discussion, and I want you to share it then, just so we'll be, we'll be okay. Are you okay with that, fellow commissioner?
Uh, I'm okay with, with turning it down, but I.
Yeah, I know, but what I, what I want you to do is to make sure we're fine. Go ahead and, and let's move forward with his, his, um.
What I don't like is.
Open up for discussion, and then we can decide whether or not we're gonna go in that direction. Am I okay with that?
Motion to table on the floor.
Second.
Second, for the sake of discussion.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Who is making the motion to table this time, Commissioner? It failed, so he's making a new motion. The lack of a second.
It wasn't clear. And so we have more information from Ms. West, and so now Commissioner Campbell made the motion to table.
McCaskill, second, for the sake of discussion, and I would like Commissioner Jones to be able to state what he has.
That I feel that it creates urban sprawl. It's not in our future land, land use. That's not what we had. If you could show me that, you may satisfy the question that you had a resident that lived two houses down say that they were not noticed on that particular, those particular parcel. We already know you made, your department made an error. So we, as governing body, ended up voting on something that wasn't accurate at the time. So I will say that publicly. Kim, can we sometimes say that we made a mistake? And I think at this point, until all parties come back together with actual facts, what they're trying to do, and the effect that it'll have on those areas, because everything else surrounding, though, that parcel is the county, Putnam County, not city. There've also been some things where we had the water and sewer come from, I don't wanna go to that. Yeah, well, the, the young man just told us, he just told us, he bought it here, that, that, uh.
Change the land use designation on property that is not within the jurisdiction of the city. This is city property.
I, I understand the city property. They're asking for a rezoning, and I said, let's deny the request to rezone it from commercial, because that's what it is. As the young man just said, as long as he's been there, it's been commercial. So we don't have to rezon it as residential. So I, I'm not.
Commissioner, Mr. White was referring that he didn't get notice was when they rezoned the part, the lot, one thirty-four, back in twenty twenty-three. That's when he didn't get notice. Not this time. He got notice, and that's when he came to the hearing.
I know it is a different property, and it was presented, and that's my, my position. I put the motion up. You don't have to go with my motion. Another thing, uh, attorney, you had that readily accessible, but when we were asking other questions, there was no guidance. I just wanted to say, no, I talk, I know what I'm talking about.
I, I have these slides queued up on all future land use change requests and rezoning requests. They are the standard slides that you have seen numerous times. I've put them up just for your ease of reference. Um, there's nothing different about that.
So we let Mr. Kennedy talk, and when Mr. Kennedy talked, it appears that he didn't present anything to support. And I didn't actually come up, Mr. Kennedy. I say, when we did allow you to talk.
Did you call him to the podium? Call him to the podium?
I, I did not call you to the podium, Mr. Kennedy. Please sit down, because we're getting really, again, out of control.
Did not call you to the podium, and if you do not sit down, I will ask that the police remove you.
Thank you. No, Mr. Mr. Kennedy, please just sit down. He's, it's okay. Uh, please, okay. I mean, please sit down. It's okay to sit down, is what I'm saying. Thank you.
He's sitting there telling you that she did not approach the podium, so.
I, I'm, I'm down with it.
We have, for the sake of discussion, we do have a, a motion and second on the floor to table. How do we wanna proceed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, we have all opposed.
Nay.
Nay.
Motion failed, two to three.
Okay. On to I.
You can, it is.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just, yes. You're right. I'm sorry.
There needs to be a new motion of story, so that this can properly be.
Moved on.
Moved on.
So who's making a new motion, and what is it?
I made a motion to deny the request for rezoning.
Emotion. Do we have a second?
Madam Mayor, is it for the rezoning or the flume? Can I, can I have clarification?
For the, the application.
The entire application to the flume and the rezoning? I haven't read the caption for the rezoning.
Go ahead and read the other one, please.
Read? No. Two separate things.
I just said for the, for the zoning, and then you guys stopped it. You stopped it there.
Point of order. Point of order. I would like to recognize again that the individual is speaking from the floor. May, Madam Mayor, can you please control that? Manage the meeting in a manner so bad. That individual is not speaking from the floor again.
There is amending the future land use map and rezoning parcels. Those are the two.
Thought was ignoring.
I don't know if I may. Just, just to remind the commission.
Just wait, Mr. Gami, try to get this resolved first, please. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so there are two items, if you look at the agendas. Okay. So what is your motion, Commissioner Jones?
The first item that we were just discussing was to rezone. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Feature land use?
The first item is to change the future land use map.
To change it, and, okay, well, again, I think I vote to decline, to, to deny that change of the future land.
And rezoning?
And rezoning.
I.
See, you said it twice.
I take one at a time.
Future land use map changes, let's, I deny.
Is that a vote or a motion?
A motion.
A motion.
Just that one item.
Second, for the sake of discussion.
Your motion and a second discussion.
Yeah, I just want to remind, uh, the commission that this is quasi judicial, and you have a staff report with addressed the standards that are applicable to the land use amendment and to the rezoning. If you want to deny, you're gonna have to have some findings of fact that staff is incorrect or made mistakes in the, in the analysis.
To, to state it, state the incorrectiveness, the errors before, when it was presented. Not only that, and I said, what it's creating, the change will create, create urban sprawl. And that is left up to the applicant to prove different. Am I right or wrong on that?
Except Commissioner Jones, the, the staff report directly addresses the issue of urban sprawl. And here, here's the problem. The vote is going against what your internal staff is finding. So you, what you're going to have to do is refute that through a finding of fact that it does not constitute urban sprawl, because it does not meet the criteria, which is typical of urban sprawl. For example, it constitutes leapfrog development. It doesn't have existing infrastructure. It wouldn't constitute infill development.
Well, well, would this justify, staff report would include approved through the assistant city manager, who actually has an interest in this property, as well as presented it to us to pass it. So if you, if you wanna know why I wanna deny it, there you are. So without trying to say that in the public, that's the real reason why. Okay, so there's conflict. Conflict, I feel, arise in even creating. If I'm wrong, I'm leaning on you, uh, attorney. If that's not, we'll move forward to whatever direction you say I should go.
Okay, so your, your finding of fact is because the assistant city manager was involved in the application, uh, is one of the applicants?
Actually, you said in staff that approves this, because he is actually Mr. Lorenzo's boss, direct report when this is happening.
Okay, so that is the basis for denial.
I, I, I think.
Let me show, I never reported to the assistant city manager. I report to the city, to the city manager.
The assistant city manager hired you, Lorenzo?
No, the city hired me.
He doesn't have here, he got hired.
Yeah, but he, I don't report to him. I report to Mr. Bell.
Please, John.
Yeah.
So you tell me, you just told me that staff, who is staff? Can we identify staff that pushes forward and approving? Who was, who are the members, members of staff?
It's your planning staff. It's your planning department.
All involved, please. Can you, and then you'd make me make a better decision.
Well, it sounds like the denial is based upon the fact that the assistant city manager is one of the applicants for the land use change and the rezoning, and that is the basis for your motion for denial. Am I capturing that correctly?
You're not, you're looking at me.
Also, also, there's also approval. He's in the line of approval as well. So you're playing, you're on both sides of this thing. That's how I see it. So how about verifying that if that's not a conflict, or it's not a reason to go forth or to deny it, you give us direction on that, uh, Madam Attorney?
So the, the fact that you have a member of your staff that is an applicant for a rezoning and a future land use change in and of itself is not a conflict of interest.
And he's in the approval line, because he actually is.
That's not.
He's not in direct report? Who hired you, Mr. Lorenzo?
I think the question is, who was the?
I, I asked a question.
I received an offer of employment from the city of Palaca. At the time, the, there was the interim city manager was Mr. Jonathan. Was the, was the acting city manager at the time when I got my, uh, offer for employment.
Which was who?
And this, this item began before my time.
Which was who?
Staff report that was, that is part in your package, the analysis was done by the private planning director.
I didn't hear it. Who was the acting interim city manager?
Jonathan Griffin.
Thank you.
So if that's not, I'll follow your direction as, as far as being legally in line.
I, I have a question.
So.
Mr. Bell?
Yes, I wanted to get some clarification on what the leapfrog development is.
Sure. Leapfrog development is when you have, um, development within a urban service boundary, then you have undeveloped land. Then you have undeveloped land and you leapfrog over that land to develop something that is well beyond the urban service boundary.
Right. So, leapfrog could be, also be a reason.
Leapfrog is an indicator on the old, under rule nine J five, a indicator of urban sprawl.
Yeah. So all of that is the reason why I would deny. If that's not enough.
Except this is not leapfrog development, it's infill development.
How is that not leapfrog when we're talking about state rule twenty? Has, anything past the hospital on the south side of the road is all county development. Until we get that one spot, which is seventy-three forty-one, and we go, we wanna make this partial city.
And I'm happy to do a presentation on what constitutes urban sprawl, but this is a neighborhood uh, with existing available infrastructure such as water and sewer. That, that is classic infill development and not leapfrog. Leapfrog is when you stick a twelve hundred homes in the middle of a cow pasture that has no existing infrastructure and is not adjacent to an urban service boundary.
Well, again, urban service boundary. I'm not gonna go back and forth with you. So you said it doesn't constitute it. The city manager even chimed in and he probably thought it was leapfrogging as well. So if you say no, I go along with tabling, but my, I think my vote failed anyway, if I'm not mistaken.
Table that failed. To table failed.
Yeah, the table failed, but I, I still don't, didn't get any, any direction from my counsel here.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
I went. Ma'am, ma'am?
I'm saying you have the floor, ma'am. Go ahead.
I had it. We didn't get any direction from my counsel really after that.
Disagree, I got a whole lot of directions. Direction was we should have tabled it.
But the table has died.
On, because if we don't, we're not gonna move on. Allowing it to have, to be properly vetted, that would have sealed it. That would have given us the opportunity for us to make sure, again, we have to think about. She's brought up the possibility of litigation and things of that nature. We want to be mindful of that. Again, if we asked her the question, she gave us the answer, and it may not be what, what you wanted to hear. We have to respect what she has brought to us. And again, if you agree, you disagree, that's the way you vote. But again, in order for us to move on and move on to protect this city, we got to make sure that we make a decision solely based on what's been presented to us and not personal feelings.
Thank you. Commissioner McCaskill.
Thank you for that, and I have no personal feelings. I would like to correct that if that's what we need. Since it died legal, how do we move forward in order to correct this?
I have, my advice does not change on this issue. I, I believe you should table, postpone this matter, table this matter. So you can fulfill whatever questions you have, whether it be additional information about urban sprawl and what constitutes leapfrog development. Uh, but my, my legal advice to this commission is to table this matter to get that additional information.
Rightfully understood. What is the process we need to take to do that since it's already died? Do we, do, do we open it back up, retype? That's what I need to know.
Sure, you can do a motion for reconsideration so long, um, as it, the motion is made by, I'm sorry, it's late, by someone who.
Can I make another suggestion? Instead of tabling it, which is typically at a later time in the meeting, why don't we look at a motion to postpone to a later date? That way you don't have to worry about reconsideration. Just take a motion to postpone.
Um, I make a motion.
No, you go ahead, cuz I wanna, if we second it for the sake of discussion. Is that, is that something that we can do? If, if that was a plan B, I would have liked to.
Absolutely, I, I.
I, I like to make a motion to postpone until a date certain.
The next commission meeting.
Next commission meeting.
Next regularly scheduled commission meeting, by the way, which is August the eighth.
That's why I say it dates certain.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Your motion is second, all in favor? Any opposition? Thank you.
So, I get clarity, I still ask a question, it's, it's not to bring, so, my question was. Mr. Lorenzo, who bringing these things forward if you said with the approval? And if, so your work goes directly to Mr. Bell?
That's correct. That's correct. I report to Mr. Bell.
So, with any of the, uh, recommendation for these, these developments, who are, who all is included in that? Bring a flume to us, who on staff is included?
Like, like I mentioned before, this, I, this rezoning, this plot, all began before my time. What I can do for the next meeting for the, when you continue to.
What about since you've been here?
What about it, Commissioner?
Since you've been here, and you bring these, these, uh, these decisions to annex, not rezone, zoning changes, lot splits. Is it solely you to make those decision?
Yes, I'm the, I'm responsible for making the staff report and to do the analysis that is required under Florida statutes. This analysis on this, what you had in front, it was done before my time. What I can do is for the next meeting, is I will reconsider the analysis and will do my own analysis if that's something that the commission would like. Because remember, this already went to the planning board. The planning board considered, they recommended approval. Staff review, and we still recommend approval. But if you want, I will take another.
Your staff, just you?
The staff, the, the planning director was before my time.
I know, and, and the reason why I'm asking, it's not interrogation, but you, we always get staff recommend. Who is staff? Who's all included? That's basically what I'm asking.
Well, in this case, it's me. I'm the planning director, and I'm responsible for this hiding coming in front of you. So, the planning director makes a recommendation based on a technical analysis of the, of the criteria that you have in the Florida statute, either to recommend approval or denial.
And again, the planning director has the education and experience to review these matters and make the recommendations. And we are a legislative body, not an administrative, so we're not micromanaging. He does discuss it with the city manager, Mr. Bell in this case. And that is the process for all of these items.
I'm glad you clarified that. You just made it, that they do discuss it with the city manager. Thank you. That's what I wanna know. So that mean that parcel was already discussed with the private city manager or acting? Which, thank you. Thank you. I have no further question.
Okay, thank you.
On to, um, I'm getting lost here. On to I, please.
It's actually to the live, but, um, it's, um, to, to just continue this, the second half of this. An ordinance of the city of Palac of Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the city of Palac of Florida be amended uh, from city of Palac, a general commercial C one to the city of Palac, a residential single family R one for the following property located Solis Kelly Smith School Road, Plac, Florida, three two one seven seven. Partial numbers nine, ten, twenty-six, zero, two, one, three, four, zero, 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 one, zero, zero, nine, ten, twenty-six, zero, two, one, three, four, zero, 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 two, zero, and zero, nine, ten, twenty-six, zero, two, one, three, four, zero, 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 three, zero, providing for severability, providing for scribner's errors, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, and because we have motioned to, already have this in place, we don't have to go through this and through two. Are you going to read that too, or do we, are we done with this and we go on to D? We have voted on ones and not the other, um.
You cannot vote on a rezoning without the future land use in place.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. So we just have to move on to D.
Do you need a motion to postpone that as well?
Yes.
So. To postpone.
Motion to postpone. Your second motion, your second, all, all in favor? Any opposition? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just recording that vote. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Um, moving along to the next ordinance, um, to be presented. Uh, this is, uh, actually second reading for adoption. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three forty-eight, an ordinance of the city of Palac, Florida, mending provisions of a planned unit development known as Crystal Cove RV Resort Phase One located at one-two-one Crystal Cove Road to remove the requirement for a swimming pool, spa, or like facilities. Allowing up to thirty percent of the build sites to be used as a park model, recreation vehicles, and revise the maximum length of occupancy to no more than a hundred and eighty days in any of twelve consecutive month period, providing an effective date, providing for scribner's errors.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Gami, on this, you know, second reading? Okay, thank you. I'm gonna open the floor up to public comments. Anybody here for public comment? Being non-cloaked, public comment, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three forty-eight.
We have a motion and we have a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. On to E, ordinance twenty twenty-four oh nine.
Uh, presenting, uh, to the commission for first reading, twenty twenty-four oh nine. An ordinance of the city of Palac, creating the municipal code sections fifty-four dash one through fifty-four dash six. Establishing procedures for quasi judicial proceedings, providing for severability, providing for defective date, and providing for scribner's errors.
Thank you, Ms. West.
Currently, the city lacks, uh, any established procedures within its municipal code for quasi judicial proceedings, which, as you just noted, are a fundamental part of land use law and are legally required for all land use changes. Establishing this procedure codified in the code will provide transparency, not only for the city commission, but for staff and for the public on a wide range of proceedings that come before the city commission, its board and committees. Um, this defines all the applicable terms, and so you're going to have basically standards moving forward on all your quasi judicial proceedings. And this has been a bit of an issue I've noticed as we have had some of your, um, committees. For example, the Historic Preservation Board, uh, you had a couple of appeals. And it's the, the, the people making the appeals wanted more clarity on the process. And I've tried to implement that on a piecemeal basis, based on my experience. But clearly, this, this was a, a needed change in your code, and I would strongly recommend adoption.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. West? I'm gonna open the floor to public comment, excuse me. Anybody here for public comment? Saying non-closed public comment, do we have a motion? A motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. On to F.
Thank you for voting that vote. Motion passed unanimously. Item F is a resolution.
Clarify, I'm sorry, uh, that was first reading.
Right, okay, right. Uh, yeah, I said that. Um, this, this is, uh, Trail thought. Resolution twenty twenty-four R one forty-five, a resolution of the city of Palac of Florida, adopting the tentative millage rate of six dot four. I don't know if I have to say the zeros, but oh, 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 mills for the levying of ad valorem taxes for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four twenty-five, providing an effective date and providing for scribner's errors.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, all that are in attendance. Um, the chapter two hundred of Florida statutes set a timetable for the calculating and notifying the public of the process of setting ad valorem millage rates and adopting a budget. So like day one is July first, and then we have by twenty, thirty-five days, we have to actually notify or advise the property appraiser about proposed tentative millage rate and also the current rollback rate. Uh, within fifty-five days, um, the property appraiser will mail out to the city and property owners a notice of proposed tax. The eightieth day, we, um, have to start doing with certification and must hold a public hearing. So, September twelfth, we will be holding our first public hearing. September twenty-sixth, we intend to hold this, the final and second hearing. So we've already received the certification of tax value from the county appraiser. And this year, our preliminary gross taxable value is seven hundred twelve million nine hundred fifty-three thousand, which is actually seven point eight percent, or fifty-one million dollars more than what it was last year. Last year it was six hundred sixty-one million five hundred twenty-three thousand. So, we will make certain that we meet the deadlines. The rollback rate, uh, as calculated is six point one two seven one. And that's not a tax increase, that's just based upon the fact that the property value have increased and to be certain that we remain level. So, um, applying the proposed rollback rate will give us an income level of four million three hundred sixty-eight thousand. The rate that we have currently is six point four zero zero zero. If we main, if we just stay there, we would then generate revenues of four million five hundred sixty-two thousand. So that's slightly more than the rollback rate. Uh, we have actually three options. Option one, adopt that rollback rate of six point one two seven one or maintain the current rate of six point four zero zero zero. Or we could consider other options. In the packet, I did put in some historical information, um, letting us understand like how the values have increased, uh, from twenty twenty. We increased from thirty-seven million and now we're up to sixty-four million. So, our three districts together. And then, uh, the revenue from twenty twenty-one, we were at five hundred sixty-eight thousand. It's anticipated for this budget that we would be closer to nine hundred thousand. So that lets us understand how our property values are increasing our revenue for, uh, the CRA as well. Okay, so, there were some options I put here. I put the six point one two seven one, the six point four. And then, I, not knowing where you would like to go, I did say perhaps you wanted to increase, um, revenues by say a set amount, five hundred thousand. If you thought of that, then your millage rate would be higher. It would be six point six eight. And if you decided that you wanted to earn a certain percentage more than what you earned this year, let's say five percent, then your millage rate would be higher. It would be six point seven two, a little bit lower. Okay, so the point is, the rollback rate is six point one two seven one. Our current rate is six point four zero zero zero. And I think that's the most important, um, thing that you want to know or information that you wanna understand. If we do six point one two seven one, that is not considered a property, you know, increase. It is not considered an increase. If we decide to stay level with our rate, we're currently six point four. If we say we're gonna stay there, our revenue is going to increase. And it will increase by a hundred ninety-eight thousand, I believe, compared to the rollback rate, a hundred ninety-four thousand. So, what we need to make a decision, Commissioners, what do you wanna do? Do you wanna stay level at the six point four? Or do you wanna accept the rollback rate? Whatever it is, we, we have to communicate not later than like August second, August fourth.
I like, I like to do a rollback, give something back to the community taxpayers. If it's, if it's got the same level of services, you're not, you're not hitting anything, at least. I mean, it's only a hundred, a hundred and some thousand.
Yes, sir.
So, I think we, we should do something for the community as it relates to taxes.
So, and I'll say it one more time on page six of the information you have. It actually quantifies, you know, what that amount is. It would be a hundred ninety-four thousand dollars less. Okay, so if we stay, if we went with the rollback, six point. Okay, so if we stay, if we went with the rollback, six point one two seven one, we would earn level of what we earned this year. Okay, four million three hundred sixty eight thousand. If we decide, or you decide, that you know what, we want to keep the six point four rate that we currently operate at in this fiscal year, we will increase our ad valorem revenue up to four million five hundred sixty two thousand, which is an increment of only a hundred ninety four thousand. Oh, you haven't done the thing there. Oh, cool. I didn't know that. Okay, excellent. All right. Okay, so you know what I'm saying. All right, great.
And if I could add, we are communicating this information to the state. And uh just realize that whatever we communicate prior to us actually doing our budget, it's going to be more difficult to increase after we communicated a lower number than it would be to communicate a higher number.
Right.
And then decrease.
Point well taken because like, let's say that we uh we're we're living so early in the budget period, okay? And so as we get to a more finite budget and 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 we realize that, oh, my God, we we need this money. Uh once we do that communication to Department of Revenue, August second, August fourth, to try to raise that rate is crazy. So, you know, whatever we report, that's our that's our that's our line.
Kind of. I I recant that because I I do want to have some level of flexibility and not lock in just in any event that uh an emergency does come up where we need to um have that additional revenue. But uh again, we do need to be mindful um if we can return some of those funds back to our um uh taxpayers. Uh that would be my um suggestion.
And as we're in the budget period, what we can do, we can remain cognizant that your your desire is to give back to the community or reduce that ad valorem by one ninety four. I we can use that as a part of our budgeting process. And at once we're, once we present to you a balanced budget and and we don't need that one ninety four, then you can always say, Ms. Cardy, report a lower rate. We want to go down to the rollback rate. You that that is, is once you report, it's it's you can't, you can't. Okay, all right. So. Yes, sir.
Great. But before you leave the podium, um we we talked about that at fire assessment. Do you think that you will be able to work with Mr. Lawson and figure out a way we can lower that?
Um.
Assessment.
Yes, if I may be candid, the fire assessment revenue stream actually constitute an average of fifty eight percent of the existing fire department budget. So you know, I'm just putting that there then to say that there is a way to create different scenarios. Just say, okay, if the right now, for instance, as of this moment, we expect the fire assessment revenues to increase. Uh currently this year, we the year we're living in, we should get like one point nine million, okay? So for the budget year that we're going into, the anticipation is two point one mil. So that's two hundred thousand that we are expecting to have as an increment in the fire assessment revenues for the budget for twenty four twenty five. If you give us a directive, you know, hey, see if we can also keep fire assessment revenues level, then I will definitely pursue that.
I I I did thought that I had uh gave y'all that direction.
You did. And I am, and I will have that as a part. I wrote it. I wrote it down.
Make sure that we own that, to try to make that happen for for our constituents.
Right. And I did commit to working with our finance director and Mr. Lawson to see how we can make that happen.
Mm hmm. Ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Any further questions? I'm gonna open the floor to public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment? Come on up.
Um after listening, do I have to introduce myself again? I'm sorry, what? Do I have to introduce myself? Okay, Mandy Stevenson, four one five Jackson Avenue, Black, Florida, three two one seven seven. Thank you for listening. Um after hearing her um speak, my question, because if you're having a budget meeting tomorrow, we as the city are very dependent on this protection plan because it's not a fee, is what Mr. Lawson said. It's a protection plan. So with that being said, going forward in the budget, you guys can't, in what I'm hearing, fudge anywhere. You you can't balance the scales any different because you are so dependent on that revenue money to keep the budget balanced. So whether you stay at six point four zero zero zero, whatever, you can't really lower that because if the market value in the City of Palac takes a nosedive, you guys have no cushion. So I understand what we're asking as residents of the city for you guys to do. But you guys also put this in place to help us get out. And now you guys have solely surrounded your budget around it, and that wasn't the purpose. So that's all I have to say.
That's why I say maybe it would cost for us to trim a little fat in some some of the but some of the some of the wish thing, okay?
That was a public comment. The floor is still open. Is there anybody else here for public comment? Seeing now we close public comment, and it's not a dialogue. It's public comment to hear the public and not go back and forth. Thank you. Commissioner Warren.
Well, and and that's that was one of my um that was one of my things as it related to like la- last year's budget. Uh like last year, last year's budget, when we had twenty two positions put in place and at well over a million dollars. And so that those are the type things.
It's not a dialogue, Commissioner Warren.
I can I had my I had my thing raised so I can make a conversation. So uh I do have that option to put it, put my card up so I can at least be recognized so I can make a comment.
But she didn't recognize you.
She did. She did. So but anyways, um again, speaking back on the budget, that's what we're talking about, trying to be fiscally responsible. Last year's budget, again, we had twenty over twenty two, about twenty two positions uh posted, I think we went with uh seventeen or nineteen, whatever. So we're we 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 had more people um supposed to be hired. And we we did, we we we're eating up the monies that we get in and we collect. So that's we want to make sure that these positions that we hire for, that those are those are positions that we need to be in in several of them wasn't filled. We don't need the extra cushion for the city. And that's where some of the fun, the 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 monies is going.
Thank you.
I can I can give you posi- uh several positions.
Public comment has been closed. Are we ready to make a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask to be fair. You allowed Commissioner Warren to respond.
Yeah. Please go ahead. Which one? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I don't, I just want to be fair to that Commissioner Jones respond. You let Commissioner Warren do it and just fair in fairness.
Commissioner Jones says he's fine.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, madam, ma'am, for that recognition.
Thank you.
There. May may I just clarify? In that budgeting process, though, Commissioners did cut at least eleven of those positions, you know. Okay, I just wanted to remind you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Thank you.
Motion passed unanimously.
Commissioner comments?
Uh my my comment was, I think you you said that the commission cuts uh cut position. We 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 as commissions, we we are not, we should not be uh cutting positions that
I'm sorry.
forth through um the city manager, whatever. So
Correction.
My opinion, I had gave direction to the city manager. You're over the day to day operation. You present what you need to the commission. We just deal with the budgeting piece.
You're correct. Right. Thank you.
Yeah. Any additional comments?
I I I would just li- listening at how today's meeting went, I would make the recommendation between staff and the city attorney to propose the proper way of how we proceed through um meetings so that we are effective and efficient in our due diligence um as legislators and that we are operating uh in a manner that allows us to, one, hear out um doing the proper protocols of the different sections of our meeting. We have been here, but sometimes it's good to bring refreshers um to us. And I think this is a perfect opportunity, just stating from what has transpired throughout this meeting on today. Good night now.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments?
I just have a question.
Sure.
Is our audit officially completed?
Yes, ma'am. And we have clean opinion. Uh our net position increased by nine point three million. Um we had a stellar report, no findings. And findings that had been there for two or three years were actually taken off of the report because it was evidence of the correction that had been made.
And when was that officially completed?
Um officially. You want me to stand up first?
Oh, you're good. I I mean, it's accord to the ma- mayor. I just wanna.
Okay, it it was actually completed May twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Oh, you know, I have a big voice. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional commissioner comments?